Hey Sarah.
Excuse me.
You're, you're the EBSO thing, right? Here's the thing you can read instead of, you can read instead of me. It's about what happened that day, why we're talking. And here's the certificates.
Thank you.
I'll take it. Well, I'll take it. Greg, I'll take it. Why don't you give me those? Hey, how you doing?
Madam Mayor, just to let you know, we are live.
Thank you very, thank you very much. I'm just going through these cards to see where I put them. I want to put them in the correct place. H, 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 and H, okay. Good evening, every, good evening, everyone. Good evening. And welcome to the March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five regular city commission meeting of the City of Lake Worth Beach, Tuesday, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Betty Rush.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sarah Malaga.
Present.
Commissioner Christopher McVoy.
Here.
Commissioner Mimi May.
Present.
Commissioner Ronaldo Diaz.
Here.
Good evening. Thank you. The invocation or moment of silence will be led by Vice Mayor Sarah Malaga, and I will lead the pledge.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Heavenly Father, we lift you up tonight in praise and thanks for all your blessings. May you continue to put your hand over our city, our county, our state, and our country. May you guide us with kind words, soft actions, and may we be mindful that somebody is always going through something that we may not know of, and a smile goes a long way. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, what is under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk.
Yes, I'm here, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I had spoken with you earlier. Did you, did you rearrange the, um, the agenda?
I think for your agenda, but there needs to be a vote.
Okay.
So you need to make, um, you know, say what you would like to do. And before you do that, um, I just want everyone to know, even though it was published already, that consent agenda had two election-related resolutions added, but they were published last week.
Okay, we're, so we're all set. We're fine.
Yes, you're all, but just to let people know, they were added last week. I had to wait till after the election, obviously, to republish the agenda.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. So what I'm asking to do with the agenda is if I, if I could have a motion, or I'll make a motion, to take G, wait a minute, um, new, yeah, new business. Where is it? Oh, B.
So on your agenda, they're A and B, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I, but on the other people's agendas, it's G and H, I think, or K and H?
Correct. G, it's G and H.
Okay, um, I would like someone to, I think we should, there's a lot of people, a lot of interest. Let's not make them sit through everything. So I would like us to move those agenda items to after presentations.
So motion to move new business currently G and H to new business A? Or to above consent agenda?
Yeah, I, um, I would actually rather have them be, let's get done with the consent agenda and then, then do them.
Okay, so motion to move new business current G and H.
Yeah.
Above public hearings after consent.
Yes.
That's my motion.
Do I have a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that was, so can you make that arrangement, please? Madam Clerk.
I can, but unfortunately.
I did both.
Do you want me to like reprint the agenda and bring it down?
No, no, no.
Okay. Yes, I will make that change.
Mark, okay, so.
And Madam Mayor.
Uh, hold on one second. Um, so can I have a vote on the agenda as amended?
Uh, I, I have a proposed agenda change as well.
Oh, what's that?
Um, bear with me. Whereas the proposed parking garage agreement would codify acceptance of one million, the equivalent of only forty spaces as satisfying.
Are you, you, what are you asking?
I am asking.
Asking for?
A deletion on a tabling. And I would like to give some reason for it. So it's not just.
I'm not clear what you want to do. What do you want to do?
I request that my esteemed commission colleagues table business items A and B, as recently voted to be A and B, until the entitlement agreements are received and the questions that I was going to, the, whereas is, the reasons for it, are answered.
So you want those two things tabled?
Tabled until we receive the entitlement agreements for the W Motive project, which I'm told by staff are imminent, a week out, and that we answer a number of questions that are still unanswered as we're going into these votes.
Is there any support for that? Are you making a motion?
Yes, that's my motion.
Do we have a second?
And I would actually like to read my reasons, because I think.
No, no, no.
Unless you got a second.
Okay.
I was thinking that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All nays?
Nay.
No. Last minute things are really not appropriate. We, we've all had plenty of time to ask whatever questions we needed of people that know the answers without doing it like this in public. So, um, presentations. The presentation of challenge coins to Deputy Maria Amadon, Deputy Ashley Williams, and Deputy Ryan Smith for apprehending, this is so cool, apprehending human traffickers in the city. Vice Mayor Sarah Malaga brought this forward, so I'm going to give her the floor.
Thank you. Can I please have the deputy step forward?
And I think they have some.
If I can have quiet in the room, please, and give them, thank you. So be, before I, before we do the presentation, I want to give a quick backstory and read an inter-office memorandum. Quiet in, quiet in the chambers, please. I am pleased to write this letter of commendation for the exceptional efforts of the deputies involved in a critical investigation on February ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. At approximately seven forty-five AM, the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office received a nine-one-one call from a young woman who reported being held against her will. She was unaware of her exact location, but indicated that she had been confined to a house for multiple days by two men. Due to a limited information provided on the phone, in the phone's general location in a densely populated area, the situation required immediate and determined investigative work. Deputies Maria Amadon, Ashley Williams, and Ryan Smith were the first to arrive on the scene and began searching for any signs of suspicious activity. Their keen observation skills led them to notice two males exhibiting suspicious behavior outside of a residence. Upon making contact, the individuals appeared nervous, prompting the deputies to investigate further. Through their diligent efforts, the deputies were able to visually confirm the presence of a female inside the residence. Recognizing the urgency of the situation, they made entry into the home and successfully located two victims of a potential human trafficking operation. Their swift, swift and decisive actions led to the arrest of two suspects on the scene. Following this, another suspect fled the area but was quickly identified through the teamwork of an additional responding deputies. These deputies assisted in the after-action investigation, search, and identification of the third individual, ensuring all critical information was handed over to the Human Trafficking Special Investigations Unit for further case development. As a patrol sergeant, I can confidently say that calls of this magnitude often require significant supervision and coordination. However, these deputies demonstrated remarkable initiative, professionalism, and teamwork, handling nearly the entire operation while effectively utilizing available resources. Their actions reflect the highest standards of the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office and exemplify our dedication to protecting the community. I want to personally commend the initial responding deputies for their outstanding investigative work, as well as acknowledge their additional, the additional deputies who contributed to the success resolution of this case. Their commitment to duty and relentlessness, pursuit of justice played a vital role in rescuing two victims and bringing the perpetrators to justice. It is with great respect and appreciation that I recommend formal recognition for these deputies who displayed exceptional courage, determination, and dedication to the mission of law enforcement. Responding deputies, K-9 Deputy Peter Tapia, Sergeant Connor Haw, Deputy Adrian Ariane Pagan, Deputy David Duncan, Deputy Christopher Ayas, Deputy Lizardo Castelero, Deputy Jason Hole, Deputy Adam DiAndrea, K-9 Deputy Ryan Soriano, Deputy Chad Householder, Deputy Alfonso DeVito Vargas, Deputy Anthony Lucia, Deputy Robert Cooper, Sergeant Ken Fisher, and Deputy Kevin Bryant. And with no further ado, we have certificates of appreciation presented to each of you three officers who went above and beyond the City of Lake Worth Beach, recognizes in honor and recognize, recognition of your dauntless heroic efforts. We extend our deepest gratitude for your unwavering commitment and bravery in the apprehension of human traffickers in the City of Lake Worth Beach on February ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. Your actions on this day exemplify the highest standards of courage, dedication, and service to our community on this eighteenth day of March, two thousand and twenty-five. Signed by myself and the mayor. And we would like to, you want to come down?
And we, there's more. We have family here tonight, and we're going to ask them to come up. Oh, yeah.
Want to come down, man?
Yeah.
Let me go with the sixth challenge point. On this side, it says, hometown hero, thank you for going above and beyond. So you're Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to say to all of the deputies, I want to know. But first of all, I want to say to the deputies, outstanding job on this. Actually, I watched the video again today. That was a very dangerous situation, and you handled yourselves well. Great tactics, um, great instincts, great job by all, all right? All three of you did excellent job. All right.
Good moments of, yeah, the good things about our sitting.
The fun part, it's a good part of the job, right?
And now, when they're crying. And our feelings are not hurt if you go home after this. I just have to make that clear.
What?
I didn't know you did. Okie doke. Now, next up, we have.
Do I have a, um, we have a. For the presentation, do I have a clicker for the present? Oh, thank you.
Thank you. What, what, what is this? This is, what, uh, what item is?
What it is?
What agenda is it? None, none, none. New business.
There are people standing in the back. If everybody can slide over, let some more people come in and sit down.
Hey, Alan, there's a spot for you up front. Yeah, I do.
Okay, I'm going to, you can do that.
Did you happen to see Jay in the parking lot?
Here's. Okay.
Yeah, it's all good. Oh, wait, I went forward too far.
There we go. Oh, I wonder what that is. Thank you. Oh, good thing. Okay, we'll get it to him. Good evening. Hi. Why don't you introduce yourself and tell us a story about the education?
Sure. Is this the start of my ten minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay, so hello, uh, my name is Ellen Ashford. I'm a member of the Education Task Force for the last two years. Uh, this has been a task force for the last four years. Uh, Mimi was a big part of that, and then we had, um, you guys, I'm shaking. I, I am the, um, I'm the, the fill-in, the backup here. That's okay. So, um, anyway, we've had a series of commissioners, Ronaldo is, we've been working with most recently. So this presentation is really just to give you kind of the last four-year summary of what we've seen, what the challenges have been, and ten minutes isn't a lot. So I'm gonna rush through it a little bit. I'm sorry. Okay, um, we are the Education Task Force, founded in twenty twenty-one, four years ago, and our, uh, purpose here is to make a relationship or strengthen a relationship between the city and the schools within the city. So we work with, uh, six schools. I think we'll get to that in a second. Right now. Uh, these are the current members. Uh, we did have one more, Lindy White. She's absolutely phenomenal. Unfortunately, she was very busy and had to, um, step back. But right now, we have myself, Andrea Hernandez, Melissa Landis, Alan Nosworthy, Ronaldo Diaz online here, and Jay Silvy. So we represent each a school. I have North Grade K through eight. Uh, Dreah has Highlands. Melissa is technically the South Grade Elementary, but she also works at the middle school. So she's kind of been doing double duty for a little while, but that's difficult. Um, Alan is here to represent, um, Barton. Thank you. And Ronaldo is the, representing the city, and Jay represents the high school. He's been over there for the last four years. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight because they have a SAC meeting um, that coincided, and it was a voting night, and it's important him to be there. Okay, so that's us and our schools. Okay, hands-on projects, uh, that we have done to establish relationships. Um, under Mimi May, there was a teacher appreciation certificate, and from, I, unfortunately, I wasn't there. But from what I understand, it was a massive endeavor. And, uh, logistically, uh, they keep saying they can't believe how you actually got it done. Uh, we have planted native landscapes at the school. Several commissioners have pitched in funds, and we've worked with local businesses to plant, replant native places, beautify the areas that the kids see the most, and really have them feel good about coming to school. Uh, cleaned out and mulched at the schools. Lindy was a huge help in doing that for us, uh, mostly at the middle school. Uh, raised funds and donated notebooks, uniforms, clothing, books, furniture. I mean, you name it. We have done what we can to raise the funds, to donate the things, to partner with, uh, community members and businesses, and the list goes on and on. By the way, we can never get enough shoes. If you have extra shoes, middle school size, bring them. Um, let's see, supported science night, two years running at, uh, North Grade, promoted and attended school fundraisers, uh, like car washes, especially at Highlands. Dreah's been amazing at that. And then created a relationship with the Red Cross. Um, so Jay specifically works with the Red Cross. And, uh, so our high school has a medical program, our middle school has a medical program, and he's working to bridge that. So the kids in the middle school can come up with the skills they need going into high school and do more when they're, it's in their, once they're in high school, in their field. So there are things they can work with the Red Cross now and then, so it's in progress. Okay. Um, accomplishments towards our goal. Um, attended monthly SAC meetings. So I don't know how familiar you are with our schools, but there's a community advisory, uh, collaboration that happens at all of the schools in Palm Beach County. And it is the teachers, a student, business representatives, community representatives, parent representatives, and they come together once a month to listen to what's going on in the school and either give their advice or vote on important things like how to spend Title One money. Um, anyway, we've been doing it for years. Uh, let's see. Two of our members are currently voting members on SAC committees, which is kind of a big deal in the schools. Uh, we've met at least over two hundred hours. We've had presentations from, uh, uh, tons of people, principals from the school, um, the public information officer, um, interim city manager. Thank you, by the way. Um, let's see, a city librarian, music teacher, the list goes on. We've really tried to reach out to as many people in our community as possible to come talk to us about what the schools need, what are their concerns? Okay, so their concerns are, uh, safety, getting to and from school, the middle school especially, the kids crossing I-95. Um, just simple things like needing new furniture, either in the aftercare programs or the cafeterias, getting walls painted. Um, everything from a leaking roof to needing a new, uh, water fountain in an outdoor area for the after-school clubs. And then, um, oh, this is important. Every school mentioned absenteeism. So the one thing that is common nationwide, honestly, and across all of our schools, that is a consistent need that we have not figured out a way to address yet, is absenteeism. And I'm not talking about, um, truancy. I'm not talking about the severity that gets into the legal cases. I'm talking about the everyday absences and the tardies. Um, the reason this is important is because when kids get dropped off to school fifteen minutes late every day, by the end of the year, they've missed twenty days of school. That's a lot of school. We only have a hundred and eighty days of school in the calendar year. Um, so to miss twenty of them, that's a big deal. These kids are missing just because the, it's a culture of school's not that important, or I have to babysit my kid brother or sister, or I have to walk them to school before I can go to school. There's lots of reasons for it. So what we did recently is we held a meeting. We had a representative from each of the schools come talk to us. We gave them lunch. We had, uh, brainstorming. They presented what our challenges are and what their solutions have been. So they've been able to cross over, oh, you're doing this that might work at my school. Oh, this is working for you. I think I could do that, too. And it's everything from, um, a kindness squad. There's an elementary school where one teacher shows up early, and they make signs like, welcome to school. We're so glad you're here. It's going to be a great day. And the kids line up and welcome the other kids coming in. There's, um, another school that has, um, a, a relationship with the college, and the kids go to the college basketball games, and the college basketball team comes in to tutor the kids. Jay, welcome.
Okay.
Um, so they have trusted adult programs. They have one-on-one SIS conferences with the kids so that the kids can see, oh, I've missed these days, and have that one-on-one conference so they can have that responsibility and accountability for it, even at a very, very young age, they're doing this. There's one school that sent home ponchos. They noticed on rainy days, kids weren't coming to school, so they had a fundraiser. They got ponchos. They sent them home, and those kids showed up. They have a parent liaison that puts out a Facebook message once a week, and I've watched it. She says, parents, we miss your kids when they're not here, and she's so loving. Okay, so the schools are doing everything they can. They still need help. Um, what we have found works best for getting kids into school where they need to be to be able to learn is mentorship programs. Um, at the high school, they're doing, um, uh, teacher-to-student mentorship programs. They had, um, they looked at the data, and they saw there was one particular demographic that was really missing the most. And so they set up a mentorship program, a place, safe place where the kids can go, talk about their feelings, talk about their issues, talk about the challenges, maybe get help with their homework, maybe have a snack for the day. And then they started bringing in career professionals to give presentations, talk to the kids, let them know what else they can do, and it was working. They could show that those kids were showing up and doing better and not skipping class and not leaving early, and, and it shows. It, it's good for our community. Um, so there's also peer-to-peer, the kindness squad, like I said earlier. And there's also, um, community to students, so the basketball club. So there are lots of ways to do this, and all of our schools are really working on it. Um, but we feel like even after sharing best practices, they need a little oomph. So, um, I'm just going to read your words. That's okay. Okay. We, we want to foster the importance of attending school, getting there on time to learn. Misspelling was my fault, not his. Um, from an early age, so that it's, um, ingrained by the time they enter high school. We don't want this to be something we just target at ninth grade. We want the kindergarteners to know that their education is important to us. Um, we would like to see a grant program to the schools to build upon the work they've been doing using mentorship, specifically using mentorship to help with attendance. Um, there is some pot of money that the city has put aside for public schools. We would love to see that help boost the creative ways teachers and administration are coming up with to really help their students and help their families. Um, they're really doing so much. There's only so much I can give you in ten minutes, and Jay, you have forty-five seconds. Is there anything? Okay. Um, it has been such an honor to be on this Education Task Force, and when I first signed up for it, I was like, no about this. But honestly, I have had the opportunity to meet so many amazing people and see how hard our schools are working. I tell you what, I was a teacher. I am a parent. I go to the PTO meetings. I volunteer. But I'll tell you what, these teachers, they are committed. They show up and they care. And the kids that know they have an adult there looking out for them and looking for them, those are the kids that show up no matter what. So thank you for your time. I appreciate my ten minutes so, so, so much. And, uh, I think I'm out.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for what you do. And I'm going to just shout out, if you have some time in your week, that you have a couple hours to spend, go to a school and read to the kids. Do something, commit yourself. We do it like once a year, which is not enough. And when you walk into those schools, you're a rock star. It's amazing. And I spoke with the band director from the high school, Alondra. When the whole immigration thing, thirty of her kids in the band didn't show up.
Thirty percent of the kids didn't.
Thirty of the kids in, in, in the school, thirty percent of the kid. Yeah. You're talking to the mic if you would.
Yeah, we can hear you. And Mayor, just so you know, Commissioner Diaz is, has his hand raised.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Ronaldo.
Okay.
I just wanted to say that at one elementary school, we have about eight thousand kids in school, give or take, in the city. I'm not including the private school. And, um, at one elementary school in particular, we have about six hundred kids on the elementary level. There were over two hundred and fifty kids that were not there. And.
It's terrible. Ronaldo, let's hear from you.
Thank you. Sorry I couldn't be there in time, um, but this task force, when I took over as a liaison, this task force, you know, they, they really kind of blew me away because they did a lot. And, um, and one thing that stood out was the, the need to address this absenteeism. And that is a persistent problem for years and years. I've heard from all the schools. And one of the things that this task force has done, uh, which is no small feat, is I would, for years, sadly, hear from principals in our area say, well, you know, we never really go present to the government or ask for anything, because every time we do, it doesn't come to fruition, and it just seems like a waste of time. And so, you know, this task force really took on a role of rebuilding that relationship and rebuilding that trust, so much so that when that meeting occurred, um, uh, in January, when I was in a hospital, I wasn't able to make it. But, uh, they invited staff over and talked about the ideas, and that's where we learned about all the amazing things that they're doing to address absenteeism. And so I have an ask, and it's an ask for consensus, because we have a fund. It's very, uh, you know, great name. It's called the Public Education Fund that we set aside. I believe it was twenty twenty-one. Um, and it has seventy-five thousand in it. And the consensus is that I believe we, as a city, have the opportunity to create a grant program to make it available to the public schools in our city. Um, so Barton Highlands, South Grade, North Grade, and, uh, Lake Worth High and Lake Worth Middle. Um, and have that grant program, have funds available to support these different programs that they're doing to address absenteeism. Uh, it's clearly the number one thing that they're all concerned about, every principal, every school staff. And I think with this Public Education Fund, we are in a position to actually help, uh, our schools do that, because it would benefit our committee, community when our kids go to school. And so, uh, I guess the consensus is, and luckily, the task force could help draft this grant program what it looks like. It's, it'll be nice and pretty simple. Uh, and I, and there would be a separate ask. I know he's not there, and I, I, I don't like volunteering people. But if Jerry Kelly is available, uh, to consult and maybe have a meeting or two, I think that would be really great. So if the rest of the commission could be supportive of that, I would really like to see that come to fruition.
I think that's a great idea. I think that we should look at, I, I, and I don't. I think that's a great idea. I think that we should look at, and I don't pop quiz the staff, but you know, where did that, when did that money get set aside? Was it from one year? Because if we give it away, we have to replenish it. So I totally personally think it's a great idea. We just need to look, you know, the mid
It's a good pop quiz because I can answer that right now.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, it's a good pop quiz because I can answer that right now. It was a one-time, it was a one-time money transfer into this fund because it was from an education-related thing. If you remember the community Wi-Fi thing, so there was money left for that. And when I have the resolution and, but that could be shared, Oriana can share it. And the Public Education Fund is very general. It basically just says, you know, to support our public schools specifically and the programs that they have and, and, you know, invest in our community. So it's, it's written very broadly. The way we did the math and there's maybe a couple of different ways of doing a grant program. But if you did, for example, a maximum of $4,000 a year to each school, it would give you like three years of funding.
Ronaldo, I'm sorry, I'm going to pull a point of order here. And I, I love the schools and I think this is a great topic of conversation, but we actually went over this before the, the meeting and this was an education task force update. And we specifically talked about that we were not going to discuss this ask right now and that it needs to come back to us as an agenda item and that this is just an update. So I, I appreciate it. I'm, I think it's a great idea, but it's not the appropriate time for this right now and we have a packed schedule. So with all due respect, I would like to end this conversation.
A little slight disagreement. That, that's why I'm asking for consensus because I think it should, obviously needs to come back.
To bring it forward as an agenda item. I, I think that's fine.
I'm not disagreeing with that. It needs to come back as agenda, but the consensus is for when it does come back on agenda, the task force can draft the grant program and so you can see what it looks like. So it's a little bit more substantive, right? We're not going to.
We'll work it out. We'll work it out. Okay. So we have two, any more lights on? Okay. Hey, thank you very much.
And thank you for what you do, really. Our kids are so adorable. You can go home to your families now.
Our feelings, we have, our feelings don't get hurt if we leave now.
Thank you.
I'd like an approval of the minutes and the oh, oh my God, presentation of G. Sherman Childs, presented by Steve Lockwood, president of the Lake Worth Historical Society. And we actually have a member of the Childs family with us tonight, Carol. Carol is a descendant of Mr. Childs who, who was, you'll hear more about.
Absolutely. Madam Mayor and Commissioners, I, I'm going to, I'm going to have to move fast and only cover the highlights of his incredible career. The Historical Society, as you know, we, we perform research, we sometimes fund research, we have presentations monthly and a number of publications, one of which I believe that you all on the dais received. It's on Amazon for anybody who's truly interested. So I'm going to move pretty quickly. The, the importance of G. Sherman Childs, Lake Worth, is he was the principal architect from the founding of the city in 1912, right up into World War II, including, by the way, of course, the building that we're sitting in, which you may not know, was a federal aid project as an auditorium and storm refuge center in 1935. Childs left quite a legacy in Lake Worth Beach, which I'll only touch on a bit, but his career kind of tracks the first 30 years of, of the city, of a growing pioneer to city, starting in 1912, right up to World War II. He did municipal buildings, churches, business buildings, houses, and he worked through the city's boom and bust. Aside from his architecture, which I'll talk about in a second, he was a pioneer and he was a character. You can see him here in his motorcycle outfit. He was, he had waged a constant battle with the police over speeding on his motorcycle. He designed one of the very first houses in Lake Worth in 1912 that he shared with James Love, the first elected mayor of Lake Worth, who also came from Minnesota, as did Childs. He was first the city engineer and then an architect. And he was very visible around town in committees and boards, anything to do with building. His office was on Lake Avenue. You can see, if you look closely, there's a sign on the right-hand side that says G. Sherman Childs Architects. A little hard to see, but he was there. Perhaps most notable was Childs authorship, if you will, of, of the city halls of Lake Worth, starting in 1913, which was for the clubhouse, the first city hall in 1914. And then the Lake Worth Elementary School in 1915, which later was converted to City Hall. And then finally, what was called the Municipal Auditorium, which is now City Hall. And I'll touch briefly on, this is Pioneer Park, the current site of City Hall as it looked in 1914. That's the clubhouse in the front. That was the major meeting space for the pioneers for the first several years of the city. Actually, first several years, I should say, up until the 1930s. It was a big meeting room. And it was later called the Auditorium. And it was built before the city was incorporated using donations from land contract owners and, and local labor. In the background, in the sort of middle-left, is the first real city hall, Lake and H, 1914, fire, police, jail, and the famous water tower you can see in, in the back. The first city hall, of course, no longer existing. Here it is just after, well, really during construction with the fire department and their equipment standing out in the front. The, the, his next major building was the first elementary school shown on the upper left in 1915. In 1914, the, in the 19, Hurricane of 1928, the top floor blew off. And there was also fire. And so the building was redesigned by another architect and became City Hall about 19, about 1930. And remained so until 1973, until the municipal auditorium building we're in was converted to City Hall. It's also important to recognize Childs as a city engineer for the first four years, in particular, his contribution to the design of the Lake Worth waterfront, while he spent a lot of time on, you know, streets and sidewalks and those kinds of things. He designed the extension of the waterfront, 250 to 300 feet out into Lake Worth, sand fill behind the wooden and the later concrete bulkhead. And you can see his ambitions for marina, for ball fields and so on, on the waterfront that were typical of the day. There were, there were some money problems. There was a lot of delay and it wasn't completed until 1919. But of course, as we know, today, the southern half is Bryant Park and the northern half is the golf course. I like this picture from 1916, shot, I believe, from the water tower looking east to the lake. View down Lake Avenue, four blocks, four blocks down the center of town. You can see the, the auditorium and the clubhouse in the first block in in, in the center. And then back in the distance, you can see the twin conical towers of the first elementary school. One of the interesting things about this picture, I can't find, figure out, but notice all the cars parked in a row. I'm wondering whether this was a picture sponsored by some kind of a car dealership because it would be unusual to have so many cars parked there all at once. Another one of his major contributions to the city was the Scottish Rite Headquarters, the Masonic Temple. Every big city had Masons, fraternal organizations. Lake Worth, Childs was a major player in, in the local Masons organization. And like many of the Masons building, it was paid for by rental of the ground floor for commercial space. And the building of, of the 1923 building was delayed a little bit until until the Masons were able to cut a deal with the post office, which occupied the ground floor. It, too, was damaged in the hurricane of 28, as you can see in the middle. And it's been rebuilt. In fact, that picture's not quite up to date, given the work being done by Vanilla Ice with the support of the CRA. So again, we have Childs playing a major role in our city today. I won't talk, I won't talk much about the, wrong direction, sorry. Uh-oh. I don't know. Sorry.
I paused your time, Steve.
Sorry.
No worries.
He, one of the things, Childs also designed almost all the first churches in Lake Worth. In the first four or five years, there were several churches of various denominations. And he designed churches in the style that those denominations want a very, almost none of his church work stands today because, of course, these buildings outgrew the, these denominations outgrew the churches that he originally designed. He did a lot of commercial buildings, again, most of which have not survived. But my favorite is the First National Bank Building. The small picture in the upper right-hand corner, this was the only bank in Lake Worth that actually had the charter to, to develop US currency.
Steve, I'm sorry, let me stop you. Alfonso, can you share the screen? Please.
Okay. It, 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 it more recently was the Florida Food and Farm Entity, although I think they have, and you can see they tore down the, or lowered the, the level of the bank building in more recent times. It was quite elegant, classical design in its day, demonstrating that Childs could work in almost any architectural genre. Okay, I'm not. Even though Lake Worth couldn't compete with the Palm Beaches for the houses of the affluent, Childs moonlighted for Edison Meisner, the famous Palm Beach architect in the early 20s. And actually, in my opinion, actually designed a number of the Meisner buildings. This is controversial, but these two houses here, the, the 100 South M, I'm sorry, 150 Avenue South and 1165 Avenue South, the Birthday Cake House and the Lake Worth Castle were two of his sort of Meisner-esque Mediterranean revival style. He did a lot of other houses. Lower right-hand corner, you can see he also worked in, in Art Deco. So he was, you know, able to work in a number of genres, which is what things that makes his career interesting. I'll just end with coming back to the Auditorium and Storm Refuge Project. It was almost the only major building built in Lake Worth in the decade of the 30s, which was during the depression. Very few people recall what the impact of the depression was. 30% unemployment, food kitchens, breadlines in Lake Worth, bringing food out from the West. This project was sold to the feds by, by calling it a storm refuge project because it had a storm shelter in the basement, a medical clinic and a radio station. In the little picture on the upper right-hand corner, you can see back when it was built, it had a radio tower, radio transmission tower. So it was a federal job creation project to employ a Lake Worth labor. If you look very closely on the right-hand side of City Hall, you can see the curved roof of the Ban Shell. Ban Shell usually, originally stood next to City Hall. And what you can't see were the, the, the other recreational facilities in Pioneer Park area that included truffle board, horseshoes, card houses. So the entire block was a kind of a place for people to get together and do stuff. Of course, the, as you know, Ban Shell was, two years after this building was built, the Ban Shell was moved down to, to the lakefront. So that's a very quick and dirty tour over Childs' legacy. He certainly left his stamp on the city. And even though the rest of the Palm Beaches seem to be sort of obsessed with the architecture for the, for the rich, Childs was really an architect of the people and an architect for the public. And his history does really track the history of, of Lake Worth Beach. And, and I, I look forward to talking more, doing more research about him. This publication is available from us and also on Amazon. And I look forward to coming back next year when we've completed our research on the casino.
Thank you so much. The depth, the depth of your research is really astounding. And it brings, and soon we're going to have the old photographs up in the
I'd love to live in that era. Like, take me back there.
Yeah, it wasn't that good. Thank you very much. Have a great summer. See you in the fall. It was hot. There was no air conditioning. Oh, please. So now we're on to public participation. Let's do the consent agenda real quick. Do I have a motion to approve?
Minutes should be first, Madam Mayor.
Actually, that's right. I meant the minutes. Do you approve the minutes? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Wait, are we not doing public participation?
Yes, then we're going to do the public participation. This gets
I'm going to have non-agenda.
What? I'm doing, I'm going to do that after I do this. Get it out of the way. I got it. I got it. Everybody's in. Yep.
We do have to allow opportunity for public comment on consent agenda before it's approved.
Okay. Is, is there any public comment on consent agenda? I don't think we have any cards on consent. No. Okay, so. Thank you. Motion to approve consent?
Motion.
All second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you very much. Now.
Mr. Diaz still on? Is he voting?
Yes, aye.
Hi, we just can't. We have, we have a picture of Ireland, I think, right now on the screen. So China, can't tell. I just see green from here. I just see green. Look like Ireland.
Okay, so now we have public participation of non-agenda items. The consent agenda's done. So up first is Todd Townsend.
Could you, since there may be new people here, could you just review how public participation works real quickly for people, in case anybody hasn't done it before?
Well, what I was going to say was if you're here for something that you, regarding the parking garage, the parking garage project, we have moved that up a little bit. So if you want to have something to say about that, we have moved it, you get your cards up because it's going to come earlier than it had appeared on the agenda. If you want to make a public comment on non-agenda items, the blue cards are in the back and you've got time to bring it up. Thank you. Well, if you, we, we, we
Yeah, we'll look at the items.
We got it. We got it. Okay, great. Todd Townsend.
Hi, my name is Todd Townsend, 502 South J Street. I wanted to talk about patterns. Everybody can have their own opinions. And so you can make yours right. You can make yours right. Maybe it's wrong, maybe it's right. But patterns don't lie. Kind of when you look at science, you see patterns. And we're looking at a pattern right now from the actions of the CRA, what they're doing with this crazy L and M project and this crazy garage. So let's just look back at the building that we just saw in the Historical Society there. The building right behind us, the old Mason's Lodge, now owned by Fortis, but maybe we think it's Vanilla Ice. He's going to be doing his thing there and all this and that. But the CRA bought that building for $850,000. And, and now they, and now they have sold it for $300,000. I want to know, do any of these people run their own personal finances like that? It's crazy. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Ramsey McLeod, followed by Catherine Colmeyer, followed by Peggy Fisher.
Ramsey McLeod, 24 South C Street. Unfortunately, while we continue to squabble over the W Motor Project and projected inclusion of a parking garage, there is a looming threat coming from our legislature in Tallahassee, which, if passed, will forever change how our city deals with development. Two bills were reintroduced to committees again since 2019. HB 1242 cleared HB twelve forty-two cleared the Community Affairs Committee and is now in judiciary review. HB nine nine one has cleared the State Affairs Committee. HB twelve forty-two provides for the termination of community redevelopment agencies, or CRAs, on a specified date. Our sunset date is twenty thirty. A CRA may not initiate any new projects or issue any new debt after October first, twenty twenty-five. Any CRA with outstanding bonds as of July first, twenty twenty-five will have the bonds remain in existence until they mature. The county or municipality that created the CRA must issue a new finding of necessity limited to timely meeting the remaining bond obligations of the CRA. A CRA may not be created after July first, twenty twenty-five. HB nine nine one is similar to HB twelve forty-two and goes into more detail regarding the definition of new projects. It also states the same instructions regarding CRA bond obligations. This is all in line with the state of Florida eventually allowing developers to come into the state and override any provisions in place by local municipalities in order to build what they want. Everyone is worried about another building as tall as the Lucerne being in our downtown area, when in fact, you should be worried about the towers at fifteen hundred Lucerne Avenue. That structure is eleven stories high and is in a one-mile radius of the Lucerne building. That will be the developer's new guideline, using the tallest structure already permitted and building structures just as tall within one mile. Today, that means instead of the W Moda's proposed housing structure, we could end up with one like the Mid or Deco Green in that space with eleven stories. There will be no reviews by our historical board or planning and zoning board, no approval or input from the commission, and certainly no input from residents. They will simply apply for a permit and when approved, they will start work. So this may be, or this may well be our very last chance to have a final say in what we want in our downtown area. If this legislation passes, all residents in Florida will be at the mercy of the developers as they turn our state into one large New York City. Once they get another structure built as tall as the towers, they can move out from that structure in a one-mile radius and build another one and so on and so forth. So let's come together and move this project forward and cement our last say in how development will be done in our city. We all know how Delray Beach lost its identity to developers. Let's not leave this space open for them to get a foothold here.
Thank you very, very much. Um, I think Sarah and I are going to be addressing this in our commissioner comments later. Up next is, go Tallahassee. We'll be up there next week. Catherine Colmeyer, followed by Peggy Fisher.
Catherine Colmeyer, five oh three First Avenue South. I'm worried about a lot of things in Tallahassee and in Washington and in the world. But I don't see that as a reason to bypass sensible and honest reasoning about this W Moda project. Um, there are so many unanswered questions and concerns about this and I feel not listened to and not respected. When I emailed the commission about this, Vice Mayor Malaga expressed to me that she supposed some people will never be happy. And that is, I find that insulting and upsetting instead of addressing our concerns in an honest way, just to tell me, well, you obviously will never be happy because you don't think this is a wonderful thing. The commission is proposing giving a billionaire developer land valued over four million dollars in two thousand and eighteen. It's, you know, God knows what it's valued at now, but there hasn't been a recent appraisal. As a taxpayer, I don't think the city should give public land away. According to the CRA website, the tax revenue to the city from the proposed development will be over ten years, will be two million twenty-five thousand dollars. That is not even covering the cost of the land. I've heard people make comments that, oh, the tax revenue that we haven't waived will cover the cost of the land. Well, according to the website for the CRA, that's not true. Other figures on the CRA website have no factual support. The assertion that the project will generate five point one million dollars in annual business revenue, I'd like to know where they pulled that figure from. Is it taking a fifty thousand dollar figure for the expected admissions and multiplying it by a hundred? When there's no basis for that fifty thousand dollar admissions figure? I've heard people talk about a leap of faith and if you build it, they will come. That is not how commissioners should be making decisions. I would hope that commissioners are not investing money that is not theirs without a rigorous independent costs benefits analysis and a risk assessment of borrowing three and a half million dollars from the same developer who's doing the job. A few weeks ago, I watched Mayor Resch grill, the presenter of the, of the Circuit status, which was extremely data-rich with endless graphs and, um, expressing serious concerns about the approximately one hundred thousand dollar investment that, uh, in Circuit. Maybe that same attitude could be brought to bear on this development. And if Tallahassee is going to send us all to hell, well, I'd still like to resist the little bit of hell that is developing in Lake Worth. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, fellas, fellas, all right. I know this is very emotional. I know that this is a very hot topic. We are trying to go quickly through the thing, please, whether you're for it or you're against it, silently approve of what the person just said. Thank you.
Peggy Fisher, North A Street. Um, our charter sets up how the city operates. Five of you work together in consensus. Each of you has twenty percent of a voice of one. You don't have a voice by yourself to direct staff, direct anybody. But we had that and we've had that before. And this needs to be addressed and dealt with. I did a public records request and I received an email that was sent yesterday to our acting city manager, our assistant city manager and the director of leader services. This email said, in total, I am part Irish. I am too. My mother's maiden name was Murphy. Nothing against St. Patrick's Day or parades. If this parade has a permit applied for sixty days ago per ordinance and if the city and PBSO is providing road closings and security, then by all means, happy parade. Well, if my family of a hundred people wanted to get together in a chain of cars and drive one behind the other around the city, it's not a parade. It's us celebrating. Um, this email goes on to say, if not, please proactively enforce our ordinance. Suggest contacting the NAPC. Well, I have never heard someone sitting up there say to the city manager singularly, please enforce our ordinance. And this particular commissioner, when I have stood up here asking for an ordinance or many ordinances to be enforced, has looked at me even when I was in his district for almost, well, at least eight years, ten years, fifteen, um, ignored what I requested. I also heard this individual wit directly to the captain of PBSO and directed him to do something to our residents. That has got to stop. That is not your authority. This was signed. Thank you, Christopher. So now you all know the public comment, not just what was put on Facebook, leaving off the proactively enforced. If we're going to direct people to proactively enforce, then be prepared because there's going to be a lot of us acting, asking individually to proactively enforce. That is not how this city is laid out to operate by our charter. And I'm tired of watching this one individual think that what he says runs this city. And it has to stop. And I'm begging the others of you sitting on this dais who take your job as working together as a team and have talked about it, which Vice Mayor Malaga has on many occasions. I beg you all to enforce acting as a team and not thinking that an individual runs this city from this time.
That's time.
Thank you. Up next, Annabelle. Annabelle. Anna Maria? I just, I don't know. I make stuff up sometimes. Anna Maria Windish Hunt, followed by Tom Convoy.
You have to say my name since you did.
Apparently I didn't do a very good job. Go ahead.
Okay. Anna Maria Windish Hunt, four oh four South C. Good evening. I would like to show my gratitude and I'm sure you'll pass it on to the people that really need it. I am so happy with what you've done with the roads downtown. I am not a professional biker. I ride leisurely and yesterday and recently I've been riding and I've had a wonderful experience because no one has tried to run me off the road, hasn't nudged me, which has happened a lot of times. And I could see the markings and everybody followed the way they were supposed to. So I really want to say thank you so much. Now, just to remind you, my neighborhood has more bicycles than anybody, so don't forget to stripe us. And no disrespect, when I leave at ten of nine, your circuit quits at nine, so it's not out of respect that I leave in the middle of your things, okay?
We appreciate that. Thank you very much, Anna Maria. And, and thank you, Gee. I know Jamie's, there's been some issues with the downtown. Work downtown, just one or two. And I know that our staff, Jamie and Mina, um, are doing walkthroughs and follow-ups. Thank you very much. Get it ready. Mr. Convoy.
Honorable Commissioners and Mayor. Tom Convoy, business owner at thirty South M Street. Um, my office location is right across the street from this proposed giant apartment complex. I do feel like I should be a valued stakeholder in the process. I attended the Big Suret back in May, yet to receive any correspondence from the private developer in this process. They said at that time, it was a public-private partnership and they were going to come to the public. I did not make the meeting at the beach when the hurricane was bearing down upon us because I was at my sister's in Tampa where the, the hurricane was bearing down upon us. They have yet to have an open meeting where I can ask questions. This is happening very fast and furiously. I want open meetings where I can ask questions of the developer. That should happen before you guys vote for this stuff on St. Patrick's Day. I want you guys to know, I am a dual citizen of Ireland. I think we've got two Irish pubs downtown. We could be the place in Palm Beach County for everyone to come. I know Shays has had lots going on for a long time, so competing with them is going to be challenging. I know that we've got a lot going on in Delray. They actually had a parade and parade permit. Now, my question is how did Peggy get this email so quickly from staff? That's a real question to, 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 to understand. Because last year, the parade was canceled or it wasn't put on by the NAPC that had been putting it on for a long, long time. They got all the permits. Was that the year before?
It was put on by Wheels of, um, yeah, Wheels for Kids.
Okay, so, but usually it was tied in with the NAPC. Okay, well, maybe not. So anyways, it was going for a long time. Now it's stopped. I want to see it go again and I want to see it fully permitted next year. I want that to happen. We should do that here. You guys should make sure that some organization steps up to do it or y'all do it, right? Because this is something that our city could really benefit from. We don't need to start throwing fingers and pointing fingers at people about this and that because Christopher was thrown under the bus during election season last year. He didn't have anything to do with it. So thank you.
Thank you. And we always welcome volunteer citizens to help us with our events. Panahote, Cholcus. I know I got the first name right, but I'm never sure about the second name. Solcus.
Close enough. Honey Yote Cholcus, eight twenty-two North C Street. Um, I want to speak about the W Moda building on L and M, not the garage, so I'm bringing the item here. Um, first off, as I think you all know, there are city-owned parking lots on L and M. Uh, about twenty years ago in this city, we passed a referendum, the public land, public vote, uh, requiring the protection of city parks, of parking lots and land on our beach. It was a wildly popular, um, referendum and in fact, it, you know, ushered in, I think, a new page in Lake Worth history around protecting public land and also protecting the character of the city and downtown in particular. Um, the limitation that it, it presented was, uh, that land could be leased, uh, twenty years. The W Moda agreement, uh, states a nineteen-year, eleven-month lease agreement. So after that, is Arthur Weiner's United Management going to give the building back to the city? Uh, and if not, then it seems the agreement would be a violation of our charter unless it goes to a public vote. So I'd like to hear, uh, a response to that and why, if that's been discussed, I haven't heard. Um, although I did notice that the nineteen-year, eleven-month, uh, stipulation seems to indicate that, uh, it was acknowledging that charter amendment. The, uh, second question is also related to a referendum on this issue. Um, you know, nineteen million dollars is a lot of money, a lot of public money. I was also recalling another, uh, development proposal that came before us, a twenty million dollar bond for development on the beach. Uh, private developers had interest adjacent to the Lake Worth beach and were trying to influence, uh, development on our public beach. It went to a referendum. People had the chance to weigh in if they wanted to, uh, give twenty million dollars of public money towards this development that was being, you know, mostly, uh, ushered in by, uh, private development interests next door to our beach. We voted it down because we had the chance to discuss it and to weigh in and decide if that's how we want to use our public money. I think if the W Moda project is going forward, it needs include of a referendum and a vote by people who get a chance to say, do we want to spend nineteen million dollars of public money? Do we want to compromise, uh, in a way that changes the character of our downtown? Um, in a, in a way that really is irreversible without massive, you know, uh, demolition, which has happened. You remember, maybe, may remember the Jensen Beach development that violated its own city charter and after, uh, several years had to be torn back down because of failing a land use lawsuit. So I don't think we want to be in that position of having to build something and tear it back down because of violating our own city charter. Um, you know, I think we're a city that takes these things, land use, very serious. We've, uh, you know, several times we've added charter amendments in the past twenty-five years that have improved and protected public land and public access and participation. It's one of those moments, I think, with doing the right thing is to put it to a vote to the people.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Todd Valens, followed by Greg Richter. Oh. That was non-agenda. I have, when, when it comes up, I'll call. Do we have more for those, you have the other parts for that? Which is not the parking garage. We're making a distinction. There's a distinction between the parking garage and W Moda. Right. That's what I figured. Great. And so I'll just add this to the pile when you give me the pile. Oh. Okay. Mr. Valens?
Yes, uh, Todd Valens, five thirty North G. Um, we had a big event on, uh, prior Wednesday with, at eight forty-five, we had Lakewood Towers caught on fire and it was in, uh, a symphony of, of everyone working together. It was, uh, amazing. What, uh, was an emergency, then something of a training and, uh, many towns and, uh, it came, in, involved themselves with their, uh, fire forces and police. And it was, um, uh, an emotional time as well for the people and that we were involved in the, at the, that live at the towers. And, uh, for, uh, the Nazarene Church, well, they, they built the towers and though they sold it recently, um, they, you know, were, had a great emotional attachment. Uh, it was amazing time for, um, uh, healing and responsibility from the Nazarene Church as they opened their doors. Uh, our Savior would have been the second choice. I, um, I contacted them once I saw them connecting the hydrants and, uh, the one floor. and the one floor was a lot of damage from simple smoking and not allowed to smoke there. And Mr. McVoy, thank you for attending with your Commissioner Consort wife. I say that jokingly, and I realize, me, you were on Facebook, and some people came down and and mentioned that you were watching through Facebook, and I'm sure you were contacted, and it's a great time to contact the churches that they can step into it, and the Nazarene has bathing and laundry facilities built into their auditorium, sanctitorium, and that's an asset, so things go on beyond in a hurricane, that kind of thing. And as one neighbor mentioned from the Tropical Ridge neighborhood, it also, the fire department likely forecasts if there is a disaster, towers catch on fire, the tallest building, the city hall catches on fire, what do you do, a school, an entire block catches on fire like the old days, but it's nice to see the implemented plans to fall into place. As I said, the Commissioner, historically, Lake Worth, as I mentioned history here, was, make my wheels spin in my head. They may burn the women at the stake and lower them in the snake pits in the past, and when they had snake pits out back, and I say that jokingly, but they also can tire of the men, and they may lower them into Old Bob, the one-eyed gator, because the mayors or commissioners, and my statement is that if they tire, the males can pick out Old Bob's eye. So we'll see what happens in the future. I may say that as a joke, but some understand it. And seventeen, seventeen, is this, two hundred and fifty years is coming up right quick, so that's fifteen months away.
Thank you very much. And thank you for pointing that out. Okay, that's it for public comment here on non-agenda items.
Um, I, I see that a card.
A card? On non-agenda items? Do you have one over there?
Yeah, so there are two about items for the two different agreements.
Right.
And some of the public comments were also discussing the motive, but that was for non-agenda items.
Right.
So I think some people, so your card. But, 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 yeah, but there are cards at non-agenda items.
And because tonight, we're talking about the parking garage. They're talking about Womota. Tonight, we're only talking about the parking garage. So if you have, if you put your agenda items on the cards, are they on the cards?
Yeah, they're on the cards.
Okay, so you'll, we'll call you when we get there. Okay, thank you. Okay, up next is public hearings? Abandoning.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
I believe you're net going to new business G.
All right, that's fine. I was thinking, I was thinking of getting that out of the way, but that's fine. Unfinished business. Now we have A. A, it's A now.
No, it's still G, Madam Mayor.
Okay, well, fine, whatever it is. You have it as A on my agenda, so I just want that for the, okay. A long-term parking facility agreement under the Womota project, but it's just the long-term.
So, Madam Mayor, may I? Put my light on.
Real quick, yeah.
Yep. Before we start this conversation on this item and the continued item, a legal question has come up, of which I have already leaned on our legal department. If you can pass these down. So each of you have one. I would like to read from the Florida statute, section one twelve dot three one four three. A person holding elective or appoint of county, municipal, or other local public office must abstain from voting on a measure which would inure to his or her special private gain or loss. Each elected or appointed local official must abstain from knowingly voting on a measure which would inure to the special gain or loss of a principal other than a government entity or agency by whom he or she has retained, including the parent subsidy or sibling organization of a principal by which he or she has retained, to the special private gain or loss of a relative or to the special private gain or loss of a business associate. If you look at the paperwork that I have before you, Commissioner McVoy is employed by and has shared his employment with a local entity, South Florida Engineering and Consulting. And before you, you have every one of his Form Ones that he has filled out, showing such employment. And I have reached out to our legal department and asked, if I'm reading this right, the entity in which the gentleman spoke earlier, who owns South Florida Engineering and Consulting LLC, has filed effective party for anything that was happening on L and M, to which Mr. McVoy, on November twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, wrote a letter on letterhead from South Florida Engineering and Consulting, trying to file as effective party as an employee against things that were happening on L and M.
And what year was that?
Wait, this is a direct conflict, according to the Commission of Ethics, and I'm asking for legal, who's ever given me advice and said that this, the language is the language. The entity, South Florida Engineering and Consulting, is a SBA hubzone contractor. SBA hubzone contractors are allowed to apply for special contracts through the federal government. And a hubzone, there are many factors that go into determining which areas should be designated as a hubzone, which from the criteria most recent census guiding requirements. Most often, the areas that are designated hubzones fall into either inner-city or rural areas that are low-income, underutilized, and underdeveloped communities. So there's a personal gain to keeping our community underdeveloped. There is a direct association to Mr. McVoy's employer, and I'm asking that he recuse himself and abstain as the Florida law states, and the Code of Ethics has written that he does not vote on anything involving this project.
Madam Attorney.
Madam Mayor.
I'm so happy to be able to turn to you.
Um, yes. Commissioner Malaga brought this up to me. I believe she had talked to Glenn Torcivia previously about it. I have not had an opportunity to research this matter or to reach out specifically to the Palm Beach County Commission on Ethics or the State Commission on Ethics. I think the form that Commissioner Malaga is reading from is the State Ethic Form. Obviously, the local ethics for Palm Beach County are sometimes more stringent on certain issues. So every ethics issue is taken on a case-by-case basis, and it's always the responsibility of the official, whether or not he or she has a conflict of interest, a voting conflict, whether or not they want to recuse themselves because of that, or just to avoid the appearance of a conflict. It's always their decision. Under the county ethics rule, if you recuse yourself from voting, you actually have to not participate in the matter at all. So you cannot engage in the conversation, and you cannot vote. Under the State Ethics Code, you recuse yourself from the vote. So a little bit of a different standard, but then you have to file an ethics form disclosing what the conflict or potential conflict is. Like I said, I don't know enough about this situation. Our firm is happy to assist in requesting a formal opinion from the county ethics, which I think we would recommend first because they tend to be more stringent on issues. They usually have a process that you can get an opinion in a couple of weeks, depending on the issue, obviously. But it's, it's not something we're prepared to address tonight. Happy to help with an opinion, get a formal opinion. Ultimately, it's up to Commissioner McVoy, whether or not he believes there's a conflict of interest here in New Business.
So the answer is, it depends. Madam Mayor.
Can we get, can we get consensus to get an opinion from the Commission Ethics?
Yes.
Kind of recuse first.
Start there.
Let's save some money.
As the attorney, obviously, I'm not an attorney, so I don't know the laws, but the attorney does. But what I have learned from the trainings and what I recall is that the elected official has to make the determination of whether there is a conflict of interest or not. And let me be very clear.
Everybody, don't.
Let me be very clear. Absolutely clear. Nothing in my decisions has anything zero to do with my nominal employer, Mr. Convoy. Nothing. Zero. And let's talk a little bit about the enormous tie and conflict of interest. Allow me to share with you my extensive conflict of interest and employment connection to Mr. Convoy. This is my W two form from two thousand and twenty-four. Wages, tips, and other compensation. Ninety-seven dollars and sixty-six cents. This is a BS attempt to keep the one commissioner. Excuse me?
All right, stop. We will not have people from the, from the.
This is totally a BS attempt to try to disqualify the one person who has made sure that they listen to the community and heard from the community as to what they want about this project. This is, no, it's not my opinion. I went to a.
So that's a no? So I would like.
Yeah.
Let me get control back. Let me get control back. Thank you. So Mr. McVoy's answer, he's not going to refuse himself.
Absolutely not.
Thank you, I got that. So we're asking, I think we have consensus to ask to have a, you know, send it up to what?
I don't think that would be consensus.
Well.
But you're welcome to speak for me if you'd like.
Does someone want to make a vote to have that happen?
Um, Madam Mayor, Commissioner Diaz, his hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ronaldo?
Thank you. You know, that on top of how this is brought up, oftentimes in our meetings, it's, there are complaints, and I think they're pretty valid complaints about things being brought up to the dais at the time of the meeting. Now, I searched my emails. I haven't seen any of this. I don't know what's on the handout in front of you, and, but it's pretty clear that our city attorney who's presiding over this meeting hasn't even had a chance to do the research or verify what's even on that handout. So I kind of have a big question on how this is even presented to the meeting, and I don't even understand what the end goal is, other than that prevent Commissioner McVoy from voting on this, because I feel like the other alternative is, if this is what you really want, would be to table these issues until we have an opinion. But as the rule is pretty clear, it's really up to Commissioner McVoy. Thank you.
Actually, it actually says.
Thank you, okay, please, okay. Everybody has a favor. So thank you, Mr. Diaz. Okay, so short, Mr. McVoy's not going to refuse himself. Do I have a motion to have at some, you know, the, no. Do I have a motion to have the city attorney send a request up?
Motion to have the city attorney do some research and ask the county commissioner on ethics.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Now.
Madam Mayor.
Yep.
Since you took a formal vote, I do think we have to allow public participation official action.
Okay.
I don't want to create another issue on top of an issue.
Well, I just want to, I want to tell my two cents, my, my feelings about this. Although I, you know, I, I respect the Vice Mayor. Looking at, you know, if I was the city attorney, which I'm not right now, to me, it seems a little tenuous, the connection between the employment and the drug, okay? It's not, I mean, and that will be something for the Ethics Commission to, to look at. But as far as, you know, as far as what I know about, I know no more than anybody else up on this dais, probably less than Mr. McVoy, but to me, it's a fairly tenuous situation. So I have to accept Mr. McVoy's. What?
I'm going to have to Google that word.
Oh.
It's not very strong.
It's, so my, my feeling is that it's his decision. We can certainly have. What? We can answer the question, right. So, so my feeling is the Commission on the Ethics, fine, but as far as any action tonight, I don't, you know, I believe it is Mr. McVoy's choice. If there's a question about it at some point, we'll find out, but I think that we should go ahead tonight, and Mr. McVoy can use his own judgment to vote or not. So that's how I feel about it, from my feelings.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what the vote was on the question.
I think it's five zero, Ronaldo?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so it's a unanimous vote to just have it, but not to interfere with what's going on tonight, so. What? Okay, so Mr. Convoy, I see you have a thing, but I, I think, well, I mean.
The attorney just said that since you just did an action, public comments. And it's very important that I address this because this is something that somebody posted on Facebook a while back that is absolutely false. Let me tell you how false it is. First off, the this, you know, it's fascinating, your, your faces, because you were doing it in front of someone else earlier. Let me just say this. Okay, let me just say this about the hubzone. First off, more businesses in Lake Worth should be utilizing it so we can bring more federal dollars here to Lake Worth. There's no, there is no downside to businesses using the hubzone status. Now, here's why it's not even connected. The property across the street from me is in a hubzone. The property that I currently own is slated to go away as a hubzone in, in two thousand and twenty-eight summer of. So they're not even connected. No, two thousand and twenty-eight. Look it up on, on the hubzone maps. You, you have not done your research, ma'am.
Do not.
Well, she is talking to me, so, and she, she basically.
Just keep.
So, so that there is no connection here. And what, what we should be doing is supporting businesses like me, not harassing us, okay? I was ready to buy another property because of this situation, though because you, Mayor, went to that property owner and told him I'm a troublemaker, I decided to walk away from it.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on.
It's true.
Now we have.
Madam Mayor, my light is on. So this is in regard to this, nothing to do with the recusals or any of that stuff, that's other. This is in regard to this particular topic, the long-term parking facility agreement on W Moda Project. I cannot overstate how.
No way, we're going to, this, no, we haven't had a motion, we haven't had a second. If you, we're all going to have time to speak?
I think you gave me the floor. I, sorry, I misunderstood.
I, I didn't know what your plan was. So here we go. Item number, what was G, is now A of public hearings. Okay. So proposed long-term facility agreement between the City of Lake Worth, Lake Worth Beach Community CRA and Sunshine Lake Worth Development SLWD, sitting forth the responsibilities and obligations for the operation and maintenance of the South Cape parking garage. Staff, do you have a little? Presentation?
The presentation.
Okay.
And this presentation will basically be for the, the next two items, this item as well as the one. Madam Clerk, I'm being told by IT that you have this item.
The item is in the I drive. It's number three, Alfonso. And Madam Mayor, it's still new business G. It's just been reordered.
Oh, I'm sorry, new business, it's.
It's still new business G.
Okay, thank you. You know how I am with math?
Okay, so G, so this first item is the long-term parking facility agreement. I'll go through a few slides here. We also have our Executive Director of the CRA here as well, Joe Deleva. They did pass both these agreements at their meeting last week. We also have our city owners rep, Vern Woodfield, here in attendance as well, and on, let's see now, Renee Miller, representing Womota, the developer, is on. He should be on as well. I think I saw her there. Yes, you there as well. Good evening, Renee. Uh, so if we can go to the second slide there. So this is where we kind of cover. So this is where we kind of cover tonight. You've got the background. Um, we've got the actual agreement itself um, for the garage as well as the long-term agreement. Critical path, and then we'll cover the next steps. Uh, next slide, please. So this is a, just a quick background. You know, this goes back to uh, February of last year, February thirteenth of last year, when we had the initial presentation to the CRA board. I won't go through all these dates, but um, we did have four different neighborhood outreach sessions, um, including the joint workshop that took place between the CRA and the city back on October seventh of last year. Um, next slide, please. So there's been a total of eighteen meetings. Um, and each one of the CRA meetings going back to February last year, there has been a monthly update uh, from Womota as well. I know uh, many of you attended those to get those updates. Uh, next slide. So what we're discussing here is if you look at the uh, upper right-hand corner, that would be the actual proposed museum site, which is currently five oh one Lake Avenue. Uh, just south of there is the residential portion of the project. Obviously between those two, which goes um, two blocks to the west is the Arts Alley, which um, is an agreement that was already approved as well. And then on the far left, there is the current location of the uh, surface parking lot um, downtown, and that would be the proposed location of the uh, garage, new city garage, which would go all the way down. Um, the properties you see there, uh, seventeen South M will need to be relocated, which is where Leisure Services currently operates out of, as well as twenty-six South L. And that is the one that would be relocated to, it's that larger orange box there. That's the corner of uh, K Street and First Avenue South. Uh, yeah, that would be number one. I'm just kind of hard to see it there. Um, so that's going to uh, uh, that corner of L and uh, or I'm sorry, K and First Avenue South. The other two smaller boxes just south of the proposed garage location is actually seventeen South M where Leisure is, as well as that accessory unit, um, which is like the garage, the storage unit behind it. Um, so that's kind of the, the site layout we're looking at. Uh, and just a reminder, that, that property, that thirty South K right there where the larger structure is, that is a CRA property. It's owned by the CRA. So, um, what's that?
Is that to scale?
Uh, no, no, it's not. No, it's not. Yep, uh, next slide, please. Just you, Brent.
I think I can step in here, um, city manager, if I may.
Absolutely.
That's Renee, the voice of Renee Miller from Womota.
That's correct. Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioner Renee Miller, representing Womota. Um, the development deal structure that is before you um, that you have considered in the past is comprised of six different agreements, four of which have already been approved by this body and or the CRA. Um, just for some background, the development agreement and the purchase and sale agreement have been approved. Um, development agreement was approved by the city, the CRA. And Womota, the purchase and sale agreement was previously approved by the CRA as well as Womota. The other two um, accessory agreements, the long-term maintenance agreement for the Arts Alley and the contributing structure relocation agreement also have been approved by both uh, the city and the CRA. And before you this evening is the K Street Garage Construction Agreement, also referred to as the Comprehensive Agreement and the Long-Term Parking Agreement. Um, the CRA for which the CRA approved last week on the eleventh at their meeting. Next slide, please. I, um, Brett Woodfield, who is here, is going to take you into some detail uh, with respect to the K Street Parking Garage, but um, I'm just going to provide a little bit of background um, with respect to the K Street Parking Garage and how we are here having the conversation today. Um, in 2018, WGI conducted a parking study on behalf of the city, which indicated that there was a hundred and fifty space deficit in the downtown. In 2022, WGI moved forward and prepared a conceptual site plan and feasibility study for um, a potential location of a K Street Parking Garage on the current uh, surface lot that you see there now. Fast forward to March of 2024 uh, is when Womota began having conversations with the city and the CRA with respect to the L and M parcels. And in August of 2024, um, the updated parking study for W, with WGI and the city showed that the deficit that was originally indicated as a hundred and fifty-six spaces in 2018 had now grown to two hundred and forty-one spaces in the downtown. In September, as a part of the discussions associated with the development of uh, the downtown cultural arts campuses, Womota in partnership with the city and response to the city's discussion with us for the need for a parking garage in the downtown, Womota submitted an unsolicited proposal for K Street, uh, the K Street Garage Development. In November, uh, the city CRA and Womota entered into the development agreement and the purchase and sale agreement, which indicated that it was our jobs to work with the staff to establish and negotiate a comprehensive agreement for the K Street Garage construction process. And that is the agreement that you have before you today. Next slide, please. The development agreement, the agreements that you see before you, both the long-term parking agreement and the K Street Comprehensive Construction Agreement is the result of many months of negotiations, discussions, um, figuring out between the parties how we can most effectively and efficiently produce the garage uh, for the city and make sure that we meet all of the needs of the CRA, of the city, without threatening um, our ability to successfully complete the Womota project. Some of the things that we balanced in the negotiation on the city and the CRA side, of course, our budget constraints, parking availability and the need to increase the overall number of parking in the downtown, to the ability to ensure that the city and the CRA would be able to exercise design and quality control over the product that would be created. The need to have certainty of cost, which is uh, which has guided the process that you're going to see before you this evening, as well as the need to ensure that there is tight administrative oversight from the pro, in the process. On the Womota side, we were looking towards streamlining the process to ensure that we were adding value, risk mitigation, cost controls, um, overall, the impact to the Womota development, and of course, ensuring the repayment of the three and a half million dollar note. I'm going to turn it over to Brett Woodfield to take over the next slides.
Thank you, Renee. Uh, again, Brett Woodfield working as owner's rep for the city. Uh, this next slide, please. Um, wanted to start off with some context for what the city's kind of been doing long before Womota was a, a word of, of of interest here in the city. So 2018, uh, the city hired WGI to perform a parking study. And um, you can see here that they performed a couple of surveys by kind of visiting all of the, the open uh, on-street and on-street parking and observing what the occupancy rates were uh, at peak hours, at off-hours, and uh, it's fairly long report has a lot of different information in it, but for the purposes of tonight, I just wanted to note that the recommendation of that study uh, back in 2018 was to uh, add a hundred and fifty more spots to the downtown to accommodate peak um, peak issues and prevent spillover into the neighboring areas. Uh, if we go to the next slide. Uh, so in 2024, uh, the city commissioned another study or uh, asked for basically an update of the study uh, by WGI. And in this case, uh, was used license plate scanner data. And so license plate scanner data allows the city to look at a more comprehensive perspective of what uh, occupancy looks like in the on-street spots. Uh, and so you've got um, um, percentages of occupancy there in the overall city uh, in downtown and the downtown core for, for spots that are regulated for duration of time that you're allowed to park uh, by, by the parking uh, staff here at the city. And so what you see in, in this study was an evaluation of what the capacity is in, in peak hour, uh, in the downtown core, what it looks like downtown and and overall in the broader city of where commercial districts are. And, and there were issues with capacity in, in peak hours in, in the downtown core. Now, what they looked at in the study was um, kind of, it's a, it's a general parking evaluation. And so uh, for, for the parking professionals, really, the ideal situation for parking capacity is you have no more than eighty-five to ninety percent full during peak hours so that there's still opportunities for folks to park. They also looked at locations where you have uh, vacant storefronts in the downtown and, and what, what is the potential demand? And so in the 2024 update, uh, they created this table you see on the right saying, well, what if the, the downtown vacant storefronts uh, start to fill in, not any new development, just filling in of existing buildings that are vacant? And, and what if you want to provide that capacity that makes sure that you have adequate parking? Uh, then you, you find a parking adequacy deficiency of two hundred and forty-one spaces. So that was the 2024 study and, and kind of a high level of what the recommendations were with respect to the number of parking spots. If we go to the next slide. Um, I think something to keep in mind is that the number one recommendation, you know, for both of these studies wasn't necessarily just with respect to creating parking inventory, but was with managing parking. And so both of them, uh, the 2018 and the 2024 studies recommended a paid parking program, uh, allowing the city to manage parking uh, and kind of create different zones on Lake and Lucerne, on downtown side streets, on off-street parking. Uh, and with the intention that by managing parking, it can kind of increase the efficiency of those spaces and how they're used. Uh, paid parking also encourages alternative modes of transit, as you might imagine, things like the circuit, uh, biking, walking. Um, also, uh, it would generate revenue to improve parking in downtown amenities. Uh, you know, the intent of parking programs ideally is to take the money generated from that parking revenue and invest it in that downtown or in that infrastructure, the roadways, the curb, you know, uh, you know, trees, street trees, things like that. And so um, really, if you look at what uh, what these recommendations of the paid parking program were, was to manage uh, inventory that existed, but also to create a fund that could be used for capital investment to construct additional inventory in the bu, in the form of a city-owned garage. If we go to the next um, next slide, uh, the 2024 study had, which this is kind of hard to read, but I would imagine most of you have had the chance to see this in the report. Um, a table that basically lays out what a paid parking program looks like with respect to uh, revenues, costs, uh, and kind of the expenses of running a parking program. Uh, it looks at uh, the condition where there's no parking garage. It looks at the condition where there is a parking garage. And just kind of evaluates what the potential uh, revenues and costs would be. So there's been questions, I know we've gone over some of this stuff at, at the meeting with the beach or CRA meetings. There's been some questions about what assumptions are built on this table. So I put a few of them here uh, on the right in the column. Um, so the occupancy assumptions are that from, for that uh, period uh, that kind of seven days a week from nine AM to nine PM, which is when the assumption is that the parking, paid parking program would be in place, that your occupancies are between forty and sixty-five percent in the on-street and forty to seventy-five percent in the off-street parking. Um, and that's whether or not you have the garage based on the, the way that this table is set up. Uh, the assumptions are based on a rate in downtown in general of two dollars and fifty cents an hour. Uh, but on Lake and Lucerne, percentage of three dollars an hour, as those are kind of premium spaces. And the idea of incentivizing turnover, so maybe, you know, the barber shop or the ice cream shop could get um, folks turning over those spots and opening up curbside spots for people that are interested. Uh, there was assumptions built in for employee parking uh, that would be accommodated with terms of forty dollars a month for resident parking. Um, some, some number of residents that would be included for fifty dollars a year. All of this is subject to the decisions of, of the governing body here. These are policy decisions to be made. But I think it's good to know kind of what the underpinning assumptions were in this revenue uh, concept. And so uh, also included, I know it's of interest, to create a parking infrastructure, you're going to have a parking department. Uh, you need a director of parking, you need staff that help enforce and support the program. So that parking department is about six hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, there's maintenance on the K Street Garage of a hundred and seven thousand dollars a year uh, for completeness. Uh, Bohemian, I know is something that uh, folks have noted as a, as example of, of a parking that's not working in the advantage of the city from a revenue perspective. This includes the loss uh, for that parking. These are year one uh, assumptions of a, a loss of sixty-two thousand is, is factored in. And if you see along the bottom, it's basically uh, summary of net revenue. So all those potential revenues and the, and the, and the overhead costs and uh, and expenses. So you have a net revenue that first year of one point seven million dollars, one point seven eight million dollars. It could be spent on uh, city uh, needs in downtown or roadway and such. Uh, and then if you, that's without the K Street Garage. And then with the K Street Garage, uh, that increases by just under a million dollars in that first year, considering that you have more inventory. Um, so if we go to the next slide, uh, I just kind of wanted to summarize. You know, tonight, we're talking about the parking agreement uh, that is with the, the proposal from development team. Um, but I wanted to kind of relate how the, the studies that were, that were done in 2018 and 2024 relate to that. So um, the takeaways again are that there is an availability concern uh, during peak hours in our downtown, but at the moment, it is sufficient. Um, when the existing downtown spaces are leased and, and operating, uh, both of the studies expect that the parking capacity will, will not be sufficient to meet the demand and that the recommendation is a paid parking plan that allows the city to manage uh, that demand and also allows the city to fund a parking garage. Now, when the proposal came in from Womota, uh, the concept was that a parking garage could be constructed that kind of dovetailed with the recommendations um, from, from the city's studies. And so the concept that um, the, the developer could enter into an agreement with the city that would allow uh, uh, construction of a garage that would increase the capacity of the inventory for parking in the downtown, a hundred and forty, forty-nine new parking spots uh, within five years for a city garage. It's kind of how these studies and this agreement kind of get uh, tied together. So if we look at um, one more slide uh, before I turn it over to uh, city finance uh, folks. Um, the K Street Parking Garage that's been proposed by the developer uh, kind of fits in with the recommendations and generally aligns with what came from the WGI studies. And the concept is it replaces existing spaces that will be um, uh, offset when the development takes place, uh, both the L and M apartments and the uh, proposed parking garage at K, you have surface spots there. Uh, it also accommodates the spaces that the city's committed to with the penny tax money. And then it increases available spaces as well. So if you look here, uh, we have about a hundred and nineteen spaces that uh, will no longer be in the inventory if these developments go forward. Um, but an increase of two hundred and sixty-eight spaces by the proposed development that are public uh, open spaces. So you've got uh, fifty-one spaces here uh, that's noted as from Womota that uh, has to do with the amount that is funded by the payment in lieu of parking. Uh, it's associated with the museum demand. Uh, you, you have the city planned spaces for the penny, penny sales tax, which is sixty-five spaces. And then there's a hundred and fifty-two uh, additional spaces that would be in the K Street Garage as proposed. So you have a net new public spaces of a hundred and forty-nine. So that's kind of how the original studies uh, relate to the proposal by Womota group with respect to the K Street Garage. So now I'll turn it over to Yannick to discuss financing.
Before we go to the finance part, um.
Mr. McVoy, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. Um, I have several, and I think since this is about a parking, that's the topic of the vote here. I think it would be appropriate be more, before we move on to the finance, which has a whole another set of questions, which we will get to, we should talk a bit about some of the parking aspects. Would that be okay, Madam Mayor?
Okay, well, we have um when we um, yeah, we're talking about the garage only. Now, when we get into a conversation after there's a motion, there's going to, we have thirty minutes, each one of us is going to get, Mr. Ronaldo and Ronaldo's here and going to participate, I'm assuming. We each get six minutes, so you can do it, let me just, don't react. Uh we each get six minutes, so you can either do your six minute all at once or three and however you want to cut it up, but we're going to limit the commission statements tonight to six minutes, but if you have a question about something that was just done.
Um I have a number of them.
Sure.
Yes, um. My duties as an elected official representing people is to make sure that the public does know about what we're voting on. This is a significant amount of money, public money going into this. And I want to make sure that we are getting the information fully.
Just go ahead and ask.
This, this stack is emails that I have sent to staff starting in October, trying to get solid numbers. How many parking spaces are we actually looking at? I still don't get solid numbers, so I have a few questions for for Brent. One of the thing, uh could we have it quiet in the room, please? Well, this Vice Mayor earlier indicated that she could take care of it when she was speaking, so.
Mr. McFoy, there's really no need to have this kind of bickering back and forth, I will take care of it. Audience, please be quiet.
Thank you. Um and that doesn't count to my time, thank you, please. Um what did I understand correctly, uh Mr. Whitfield, that we do not actually have a parking problem at this point? The highest number that came out of the twenty twenty-four was a hundred and five. I had thought it was a hundred and six, but I'll take a hundred and five. So, you know, we're squeezing a little, but when I spoke with one of the transportation people at WGI, one of the things they said is these numbers are very squishy. We know that they're squishy.
Please keep it to a question, because we're going to have time to expound later.
May I speak uninterrupted? This is a ten million, eight and a half million dollar thing. The public deserves to have as many questions as it takes to do it. If we need to extend the time, you can certainly do that. If you want to say we are ramming this through, but we're not ramming it, you may do that. Now, may I continue uninterrupted?
Let me just make one statement.
I would head the floor.
Excuse me, I'm asked something. Um
I had the floor, ma'am.
Mr. McFoy, please let me speak. Uh this is not my turn.
Madam Mayor, please let me speak, I had the floor.
Please just take a deep breath. I'm asking that you your questions, I don't believe, because someone said going against your time. If you have a que- not a speech or a statement, but a question, that won't kind of, we won't count time until we get to a motion and a so I just wanted to confirm that, so please ask questions rather than make statements.
Madam Mayor, I will conduct the business of representing the citizens and residents of this city as I see fit to get full information out. I have been trying to get it in writing for a long time, and I don't get it. I would like to have some of it now.
So ask.
There is, is it true, Mr. Whitfield, that there is in general a good deal of squishiness to this type of information?
So I think that um squishiness is obviously not a technical term.
No, I was going to say, we could come up on certainty.
Okay, so I think with anything that you're looking at, uh license plate scanner data over long periods and you're creating statistical analyses and things like that, you're going to do some assumptions, some evaluations. I think a lot of it has to do with the assumptions you're building in. So when WGI is doing this, they're doing it from the perspective of a parking professional using the judgment that is allocated to that and best standards. When they say that during peak hour, there should be capacity, the the occupancy should be between eighty-five and ninety percent, a person that thinks that there's only ten percent uh open spaces and that's full in peak hour is saying that Lake Worth needs more parking spots. Now, a person that wants to say we don't need a parking garage is going to walk around and say ten percent of the spots are open at peak hour, why do we need a parking garage? So I I think it kind of has to do with the perspective. Now, when they write their recommendations, they're stating uh we're looking at a kind of a suite of scenarios. We're saying if if you're looking at, will you have spots in the future? What should you do to manage that? Their professional uh judgment, and I think it bears out as a professional engineer engineer myself reading it, is that the parking in downtown Lake Worth needs to be managed better and could use more inventory. Now, it is up to the commission to decide if the way that handling that issue is to just manage it with parking and try to see if any new development can just be accommodated without additional inventory or to try to build the capacity that would accommodate what they project as uh basically going over capacity as development of existing open storefronts comes in. So I think when you uh call one of the folks that might work at WGI and ask them, they're gonna have to give some kind of list of assumptions, uh concepts and how they arrived at those numbers, because just like the table of financing, it's built on assumptions of occupancy rates, and if you said, uh I think it should be thirty-five percent instead of forty percent, I mean, it's there's a little bit of, you know, using best professional judgment there. Um but, you know, in my professional opinion, uh WGI is nationally known for parking. Uh you know, it's a it's a good choice, they're locally based but nationally known. And uh in my professional opinion and reading it, uh they quantify what is uh an issue at peak hour and what could be a worse issue in the future.
And and I think I would agree with a lot of that analysis, and both of us have extensive modeling background and know that modeling i- is not an exact science.
For clarification, not fashion modeling, we're both more computer modeling.
We're both talking computer modeling, although both of us are quite fashionable, but um.
My wife would disagree.
Uh my wife would disagree too, so we're on the same page. Um but it here's some pieces. Uh I think we can agree on certain things. One is, we're around capacity at the current. Is it a terrible problem? Is there elasticity in that? We know that there is because we have certain events here annually. We have a street painting festival, we have a July Fourth celebration, and all of a sudden we squeeze an enormous amount more parking in. And that tells you that there is, uh we won't call it squishiness, but with uncertainty, there is elasticity in these numbers. Should one be proactive? Should one make future predictions? Of course you should. Is there, does the uncertainty increase as you project the future? Well, if if it didn't, we, you and I would probably be in different perceptions and we'd be earning earning our money differently. I think it is also true, it is also true that urban planning professionals agree that a parking garage should be your last choice for a community because they're highly expensive and they're difficult to pay for themselves down the pike. Not that they don't serve a purpose, not that they can't do those things, they can. But it shouldn't be your first choice, and I think that's borne out with what you were describing with the WGI. Hey, guys, you're kind of close to capacity, you might want to, you have free parking now, you might want to manage it or try some things. And, you know, an alert, hey, you may have a problem here. I think we agree on that much. The question that's before us here is when is the right moment to go to a step that's not reversible, that's very expensive, and has a number of downsides to it? And the a related question is, have we explored all of the alternatives that might be the escape valve on getting us to a different situation? And that's, that's the part, I think it's very clear, and maybe you can disagree if if you do, but I think it's very clear that we have not yet tried a number of things. We've started on the circuit program. We don't really have any data on whether that lowered parking issues, but it might. We've not done a program to tie circuit to the Bohemian Garage, which we have in local data.
Mr. McFoy, I'm going to interrupt you for a second, this is really
Could I finish?
Interrupt you, I'm telling you, I'm interrupting you for a second. You are having opinions and and expounding, but is there's, we're here to ask questions of staff and the Remota people about this.
Okay, I will bring my question.
A direct question.
Madam Mayor, again.
You'll have plenty of time.
There is a good governance issue and
And I have to say, Mr. McFoy, that every time you say things like that, it implies that the rest of us are not interested in the welfare of the city, and I find that
I didn't say that, I said good governance.
Good governance, say, we are not concerned with good governance, I would disagree with that, so please.
Okay.
Please.
Everybody's titled here.
Well, and so we try to
If I could continue.
Boy, do you have a quick question for the staff or, and Jamie has his light on.
It it that's fine, we
What's your question?
Madam Mayor.
What's your question?
Madam Mayor.
What's your question?
Good governance means getting information out thoroughly. You are doing a spectacular job at showing that you could give two hoots about good governance.
Mr. McFoy, I'm going to tell you right now, we can stop that now.
Mr. Whitfield, could you, no, I'm not done. Mr. Whitfield,
Ask him.
Have we done all of the possible things to try low-cost reversible solutions to see whether we can address our parking fullness, let's call it? Before we go to a paid garage, have we done all of those things that we might try?
So I think a couple of things I'll try to to respond and answer. So I think with respect to, like you said, the major events, uh street painting as an example. Uh one of the notes that I I tried to include on the slide, because I think it's important to note, is it's not that there's not enough parking in the city of Lake Worth for residents and visitors and guests and everyone to end up down on Lake and Lucerne enjoying our local businesses. It's that if more than our capacity in our downtown arrives, that there's spillover into the neighborhood. And I think there's a lot of grace that's offered by residents outside of the downtown core on those major events because it's a a major festivity for the city.
Of course.
I know myself, I park three or four blocks up and people that live in that house are waving because they're happy. Uh usually now I ride my bike because I know parking is an issue. Uh anyway, uh I think with respect to the recommendations of the report, the twenty eighteen study really focuses a lot on paid parking to manage the downtown um parking issue. And to be honest, I think it's because the city doesn't have generally a a feasible way to construct the garage without some type other opportunity presenting itself. So the concept was, start a big parking program, work your way through it. Maybe one day you will have saved enough money to build the capacity that we recommend for additional inventory. The reason I think that this has come to it uh our city right now is because the Remota project, uh it looked the construction of the the art museum and residences is going to take some inventory away. And it presents an opportunity for the city to get that capital investment in a much uh lower cost fashion than would be presented to the city in a future circumstance. So if this project walked out the door and the city decided, you know what? All those vacant storefronts have filled up with bustling restaurants and new businesses, we really need to increase our parking inventory. Uh then the commission would have to find a way to do that without a partner, which is why I think there's momentum to make this decision now, instead of exhausting other opportunities. Because the concept is, we have a partner, uh the finance department is going to talk about how this partner allows us to do this much more cost effectively than we could in other circumstances. And as it's written in the agreement that's before you, the city could own a parking garage in five years. And that's a an option that wasn't even fathomed in the
And and I do, I do hear you on that, but you didn't really answer the question, I don't think, of have we already pursued the various options that are low cost?
Was a paid parking program. And as you know, the city commission has not put forward that as a concept prior. Um but I think, you know, just like uh various other uh issues and concerns presented by the city, things come to the city and and to to this commission uh to be decided at different times. And so uh it's up to to you guys to decide if you want to try to exhaust options through implementing a paid parking program that does not increase the inventory, uh allowing development, that does not add additional parking and and then seeing what happens uh or looking at trying to say, hey, let's take it, take this opportunity to increase the capacity uh and kind of implement several of the recommendations that were given to the city twenty eighteen all at once. And it's certainly uh at the discretion of the elected body.
I I'm still hearing that basically we have not tried other options.
I'm going to try to answer your question.
Yeah, but we but we have not. Oh.
Yeah, right, I don't, Mr. Brown.
Good evening.
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Brown.
Um if if, but we only have six slides left, so I'm not sure, I didn't ask at the beginning how you wanted to but um if possible, if we can just get through the next six slides and that way
That's what I was hoping.
And then you guys can just go uh is is how how you'd like. Um it just might flow a lot easier.
Sure, thank you.
Uh. Yannick.
Good evening, uh Yannick with the finance. Just going to go over the financing um uh of this parking garage. So we estimated uh the uh costs not to exceed all-inclusive eight, eight and a half million. Uh three and a half million will be financed by the developer Remota with a four percent uh interest loan, which is pretty attractive in this day and this day and age. Uh the funding will partially come from uh TIF money from CRA and penny sales tax as well from the city. Uh there will be a one million dollar uh initial investment from Remota. Uh a one point five initial investment or and initial investment from CRA TIF funds and a two point five initial investment from the city uh penny sales tax. Remota will hold the note for uh at four percent not to exceed for five years. And it will be under the CRA's um uh uh CRA will be holding the note, I'm sorry, yeah. And the city will, we will be saving as opposed to, you know, fi- uh owning this in five years, we will be saving a lot of money, which I think will be on the next lot, on the next slide, as opposed to finance for twenty years. So what I did here, we did the uh three scenarios. The first scenario with partnering with Remota, uh where we will come out of pocket uh four million dollars. The second scenario without Remota, uh where we financing ourselves, we will still have the million dollars from Remota in lieu of payment of parking fees. And we'll also still have the contribution from CRA for one point five million. But we'll still need to finance six, six million dollars. Uh and the total cost, principal and interest will amount to uh nine point nine million. So if you see the last tables on the uh on the on the left, on the right, you see that uh with the first scenario, we save approximately five, five point eight million. Uh and the second, the sec- the second save, the second, the second column uh is we save about two, two million dollars. And the last scenario, which is the third scenario, if we just decide to just uh fin- finance it outright, um just pay it out of cash without any financing, I mean, uh we will be saving about, we will be, we we'll be looking at a loss of about four, four million dollars, give or take. So again, for all this to work, uh the paid parking plan will need to be implemented. Otherwise, we'll just have free parking and
There's no hope.
Ex- exactly, there's no point of building that. And that, you know, a- and again, this is this if, um as discussed earlier, there's need for a parking garage, this is a good opportunity. Um we will own uh the gar- the parking garage as opposed to the Bohemian where we do not own the garage, we're just leasing for the next thirty-plus years. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor. Can I ask a question?
Question of Yannick.
Yeah, so Yannick or Joan. For the people who aren't privy to what happened before this elected body was here, part of the land that is part of all of this was purchased through the CRA to create parking, was it not?
Back in 2018, the city gave the CRA money with the purpose of buying land for parking.
And how much did the city give you? Not you, the CRA.
Yeah, um, a little over $2 million for the L and M parcel.
Okay, so if we do not create parking, we have to pay back 2.1 million dollars. Is that correct?
That is my understanding, but I don't know a lot about penny sales tax, but I believe you have to use it for municipal purpose.
Okay, so that that's a genuine question. So we've already spent 2.1 million. If we don't create parking, we have to write a check back for 2.1 million. I don't want to give the government 2.1 million dollars. But I think that that has to be part of this conversation and that should be worked in here because that money's already been spent. That money's already invested in this land and it was done by the previous commission, previous city manager had nothing to do with us. But I think a lot of people are forgetting that backstory of how this this has come to be where we are today. And it was acquiring land with L and M to create parking. I think that's important.
Right. And you asked your question and you got an answer. Mister McCoy, do you have a direct question?
Yes, I have a direct one. Allow me to read from the interlocal agreement between the city. This gets directly at that. This was the interlocal agreement of the purchase of those lands where we transfer, where the city transferred money to the CRA. And this applies, there are three of these interlocal agreements.
That's your question.
The CRA understands and agrees that the transfers funds must be strictly utilized as set forth herein, including the continued public use of the surface parking area. That's the agreement. We are not following that agreement. And the question is, uh, is that legal? And I have made some efforts to try to get indication on that. And so far, I haven't gotten very far with it. But that is the language must be strictly utilized for continued public use of the surface parking area. That's what the money was transferred for. I didn't write the agreement. I wasn't involved voting on it.
Okay, you have a question to the attorney. You asked a question. So you asked a question.
Madam Mayor, you have been quite good about interrupting. Could you let me finish?
I just want you to ask, like, follow the rules and ask a question. You'll have plenty of time. You'll have six minutes to talk later, like the.
My rules are to adopt is to follow to get the best possible decisions for this community. Well, then please stop interrupting me.
Mister McCoy, we have all had really a lot of of opportunity to talk to any of the people involved to ask the questions. So you don't have to ask them.
I have been asking those questions and not getting answers for a very long time.
So we have a question to the attorney. And I don't know, I don't want to pop quiz you, but that's something to to consider. So do you have another question?
Uh, I I think we have a real issue there.
Do you have another?
An interlocal agreement makes it very clear what we can do. It says surface public area.
Thank you.
So this is not that. I don't know how that gets resolved, but I think it needs to be thought about because that's what the.
And we've asked the attorney to do that. Okay, so keep going.
Okay, so um Yannick kind of has covered some of this, but these, this slide just kind of shows some of the basic responsibilities for the city, the CRA and then the Remota organization. Um, obviously, the city and the CRA would both be appointing a project manager as well as um uh entering into a ground lease uh with each other. Um, the city within uh complete the entitlement for the garage, the initial investment 2.5 that uh our finance director had mentioned. And then the reimbursement of the 1 million plus the CRA loan payment and then the permitting and oversight as far as when the construction of the project is going on. Um, the CRA is is the finance director also mentioned, we still have the revenue note for the 3.5 um providing the initial investment of the 1.5 covenant and budget um and the project oversight as well. And then on the Remota side, um, they would be doing the actual managing of the project, constructing the garage, contributing the 1 million that's already been mentioned. And then providing that loan to the CRA for the 4% we've already spoken about. Uh, next slide, please. Um, a couple of the provisions here. Um, all of you will be uh part of the the review process during the design report um and provide direction um on that uh on that design before any additional funds are spent um on the design itself. Um, that 1 million dollar contribution from Remota is at risk first. Um, and there are strict uh mild milestone guidelines uh for that design phase. Um, there is the GMP, the guaranteed maximum price uh for the garage, which will prevent overruns. Um, and I I know people always use the term value engineering, but uh when you have a GMP, you you cannot exceed that. So that is that guaranteed maximum price to make sure that from a financial standpoint, we are not going to be.
And I just want to make a point because I I've asked this question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, what the GMP is going to be based on the real numbers when the actual documents are ready. It's not two years ago or today. It's when the actual numbers come through.
Well, it's 8.5.
Yes.
Is the.
Is it? Okay.
That that is the number. That that is our GMP. Um, construction funds will be held in escrow uh and subject to city and CRA approval uh before payment can be released. The contractors and development must adhere to obviously all the the critical path and all the provisions and everything. Uh, next slide, please. So we've got the process uh kind of laid out here. Um, if these are approved this evening, uh basically for the next uh four months, they'll be working on the the design report. Um, and then you'll have limited uh design five months after that. At that point in time, uh, there will be CRA and city approval required. So that obviously comes to all of you as part of the design process. Um, after that, you've got the uh construction documentation and then the actual GMP um that we just spoke about, which is about a five month process. At the end of that, there's another uh city and CRA approval process. Um, then you have all the submittals and the entitlement apps and everything else. There's the building department and permitting. And then uh we come to that that ultimate GMP prior to um the CRA issuing. Um, after, and again, approval after that portion as well, and then have the series of note. And then um we move into construction. So a 14 month uh construction process. Uh, and that would move you into the uh fourth quarter of 2027. Uh, after that, um, I'm sorry, next slide. So as previously mentioned, at the end of this five years, as opposed to uh the situation we currently have, that many people have already mentioned with the um current garage we have in Bohemian. At the end of this five year process, the city will own that garage outright. Um, so as far as uh from an operational standpoint, um, revenue and everything coming in is not going to be going to uh pay for the garage itself already paid off. This is going to go into the actual operational costs. And as we previously discussed, uh going back into the downtown as far as maintenance, we get a lot of questions as far as level of service and all that other stuff. This is something that would generate revenue to help us do that. So it'd be it'd be going into the parking fund. So um you have the parking with the beach, which goes in the beach fund. This would be going into our downtown uh uh fund. So uh not going into the garage itself, other than annual maintenance, but concrete structure. So we're not talking about a lot of money there. Um, and as I mentioned here, um, so the city would be the sole beneficiary of those revenue funds since it is our garage outright at that point and all revenues will be going into our city account. Um, the museum patrons, we did uh agree to uh the one hour parking for the five years. So there is a set term now. And that's basically a validation. If you're going to be attending the museum, basically your parking validated for one hour. Uh, but that does end after five years. Um, they uh do have the ability to request uh once a quarter if they have a a large event there. Um, but a discount on uh the parking spaces once a quarter if they have a a large event. Um, we will have an annual lease pass rate um for residents live there. Um, which could be a benefit to the city because that'd be so many spaces that we already have leased out on an annual basis that the people will pay for. Um, and mentioned there, you know, at our at our sole discretion, we can limit the total number of the passes we actually issue out um each year. Uh, and then uh the city would not commit to long term leases of the parking garage spaces. Uh, it will uh prevent at least 50 spaces from being available to the public, which basically means that um, we had another entity come in downtown or another business that said, hey, we want to purchase all the the spaces in the garage just for us. We need to at least be 50 spaces available to the public. So we would not be able to do that in the future, which is just a good operational practice. Um, next slide. And next steps. So if these are approved tonight, um, the design team, as we had uh mentioned before, I would be moving into that four, four month or so uh timeframe for the design report itself. At the end of which we'd be bringing that back to to all of you again. There will be, as mentioned before, multiple steps along this process that we we just went through, um, that these will be coming back to to all of you for approval, including the actual design itself. So.
And we have the uh ability. I mean, the 50 spaces seems like not quite enough. We have the ability to make it to have as many or few long term leases as we want.
That's correct.
Okay.
As as long as we at least have 50 spaces available to the public.
Which I think is a bare minimum, right?
That that would be a bare minimum, correct.
Okay. Thank you. Mister McCoy, do you have a question?
I have a number of questions. Yes, thank you. Um, Mister Director of Finance, Mister Yannick, um.
No.
Um, you mentioned the $1 million contribution from W Moda is uh in lieu of, is that correct? In lieu of their parking event, because the W museum, we need to understand, does has very little onsite parking. They don't want to use space for their onsite parking. So there's, well, we will make a payment in lieu of.
Right. So if we if we were not to move forward with the parking garage, the blue motor would have to pay a million dollars.
Right.
Yes.
But that that 1 million has a source and what is our current price when when a developer does a 1 million or does a payment in lieu of? Do you know what the price, how that's calculated?
Uh, I would have to refer that to uh to William Waters. Yeah.
We charge 25,000 spot. So that 1 million is 40 spaces. Now, we were promised back in October that W Moda would build us a museum of 33,000 square feet. A museum, according to our regulations, is an institution. So if they're building a 33.
What is your question?
If you interrupt me once more, Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
I will lose my temper. So please don't.
All right, don't. Please, we don't need.
Do not interrupt.
Please ask a question rather than expounding. You can just ask a simple question. You will have you folks. No.
Please do not interrupt. It slows down and there's no benefit to it.
Please ask a question.
Okay.
You'll have time later when we start counting time.
Well, I don't, I was going to ask, why are we not counting time?
Well, we.
We have, we have rules for a reason.
I have the floor. Thank you. So please respect that.
This is your last set of questions.
No, it is not the last of my questions. This is a very big deal for our community. It should be based on full information. If you are committed to good governance, you would certainly not interfere with full information.
There we go again. Okay, go ahead and ask your question.
33,000 square feet. Our institutional rule says an institution has to have one parking spot for 300, I believe is the number. That's a parking requirement for that museum of 165 spaces.
Okay.
We are proposing to agree tonight that they get out of town by paying for 40 spaces, not for 165, 40. That's a big issue. Now, if it turns out that it isn't really a 33,000 square foot museum, it's something else. We ought to know that. But I have repeatedly asked Mister Waters and he said, well, we can't know what their parking requirement is because we haven't done the entitlement agreement. And that is why I proposed at the beginning of this meeting, let's table the decision of this.
Mister McCoy, if you don't ask a question.
Stop interrupting me. That will be enough.
Captain, point of order, point of order. Unacceptable. That is.
It's unacceptable to you.
Not a mayor, not a mayor.
Mister Brown. This one. All right, we don't need anything from the audience. Peggy Fisher, anybody, we don't need anything. Thank you.
I I I need to step in real quick. We need to follow a rule of decor. We have decor here. We we can't be screaming and yelling at each other. So let's bring it down a little bit and just be respectful. But we we can't have that, sir.
I will be fine with that if we agree no interruptions.
But but just keep in mind, we we, our captain had to come up during that because it's.
It's the third time that I've been interrupted on force.
Question, Mister McCoy.
No question on the phone yet.
Let let let's.
All right, all right, stop.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Can I have a motion?
We need to bring it down a little bit. Again, there there is no, there's no need for that.
Yeah, really. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mister McCoy, we're going to go now to our public comment.
So you're cutting off any questions that I have or trying to make sure that we all understand what we're getting here and what we're giving up.
So we have public comment. Yes, Anne.
Okay, thank you. We are very clear on that. That if you, your commitment to good governance is you shut down anybody who's asking any questions. Thank you.
Um, you weren't asking questions. You were making speeches.
Doesn't only involve asking questions. Sometimes it's presenting information that has not been.
Which, thank you. Okay. Our first up is Janet Serrano.
You might bring the temperature down, Miss Serrano.
Let's try. Okay, Janet Serrano, 413 North L Street. Um, so in the interest of getting facts.
Before we start, we need everyone to be quiet and respectful. Thank you. Please be right into the microphone.
Thank you. Well, the in in the interest of getting facts out to residents, I just want to address a few myths that I've heard around town and on Facebook about the whole project. Uh, one of them is that the WGI studies have not presented us with accurate information, accurate data. There's no reason to believe that's true. They're a nationally respected organization for their infrastructure and developmental planning. And we have no reason to think they have no skin in this game. They're just advising us that we do need a parking garage. We've also heard from people that the garage will not fit in our historic downtown, that it's going to ruin our little town. W Moda has hired a historic consultant for this project. This consultant worked with Lake Worth Beach previously in developing our historic guidelines. So he's very familiar with Lake Worth Beach. We've also heard that the garage will be another Bohemian. Um, as they say in real estate, location is everything. You've got the Bohemian a few blocks away. You've got the parking garage right downtown. And as pointed out, it would be a public asset totally owned by the city upon its final construction, not a leased garage, as is the case with the Bohemian. Um, there have been people saying that there will be no new spaces created because we're going to rip down or build on the the small garage now, the small space we have between L and M Street. Well, that's not true, as has been pointed out, will gain 149 new spaces. There have been complaints about a lack of transparency on W Moda's part. As pointed out early, there have had at least 18 meetings since February 2024 with the public, with neighborhood associations, with the charrettes at the Hatch and in other venues. I guess Mister Convoy missed all those meetings. Um, I'm glad that the funding was explained in detail by Yannick. I just because I've heard wild amounts, anywhere from 10 million and up, 19 million, our garage is going to cost us.
I'm sorry, that's time.
Okay, I just want to say they're, okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Todd Townsend followed by Panah. Todd Townsend followed by Panahotay.
Hi, Todd Townsend, 502 South J Street. Um, I just think that right now we're just not looking really good as a city. I feel like everybody is like under the thumb of this dictatorial situation with the CRA. CRA is destroying our town. Should have used my idea, which was one level up garage with ramps onto every street. You'd have as plenty of space to put in your museum, to put in the museum that's just going to sit there. Uh, you'd have 500 plus spaces. You wouldn't even be able to see the garage. And but no, you're just like, the CRA has you working in a direction and it's just not going to be cool at the end of the day. So, thanks.
Thank you. Panahotay Solkas. Followed by Greg Richter.
On a OT Cholcus. Um, is is there someone here representing United Management or uh the Arthur Wieners LLC show? Okay, is there anyone here representing?
Come on, you can't, you can't do.
Is, do you know if there is? They're in this Zoom. Okay. Uh, I think it would, I would like to hear from them or hear you asking them uh why this plan failed in Tamaraq and uh if there's any any insight there about whether or not to engage in a relationship with them of millions of. relationship with them of millions of dollars in public money on the line in this parking garage. Um, I also think it would be responsible to look at uh past and currently uh po- possible current legal challenges they've been facing from tenants, residents, uh other municipalities. I haven't heard talk about that and I think it needs to be looked at. Uh, my research, just from looking over the history of this, this uh business entity and the family legacy is that it's got, it's had a a long legacy of problems with its uh tenants and other arrangements. My next question, I want to just ask folks here, who wants to pay for parking? I won't look, raise your hand. Who wants to pay for parking in this town? Who wants to pay the ticket when their, when their meter expires? Who wants to pay the parking ticket?
You can't ask it, but-
Wants to bail out your neighbor who doesn't pay their parking tickets. No one wants to pay for parking. It's a cool thing about Lake Worth that it's actually like what makes our downtown stand out, that you don't have to pay just to come walk downtown. It's something that we should look at trying to preserve, not look at reasons, ways to accommodate developers and shift our our local downtown culture to one of paid parking. I think honestly, it's, I mean, a lot of people are not happy about it, residents and and businesses. Uh, you know, and I think that if this parking garage arrangement is gonna push us towards faster towards the paid parking plan, I think it's a mistake. I hear that it's, you know, it's one of the options for curtailing the the problems with parking, but I I don't think uh it's the one you start with. I think there's other, you know, there's a lot of like potential and more visionary uh plans that could come forward that don't accommodate a developer, development of this scale and a developer of this.
Thank you, that's time, and could you give your address for the record, please?
Eight twenty-two North C Street, thank you.
Okay, up next is Greg Richter, followed by Scott Sword. I don't, I can't quite read it.
Greg Richter, twelve oh two South Palmway, short and sweet. Been walking around this town for uh for quite a while, the last few months. Uh, been downtown every week, talking to every business owner that I can. The city wants this parking garage, the city wants this project, the citizens, cities want it. And now I'm gonna go on to just something a little bit different related to this. We hear a lot about Bohemian and it was a huge mistake. But we, what we need to do, what we need to do is I'm asking you guys, let's put together a committee for like six months and figure out ways, instead of just chipping up here at the at the dais, let's get a group of people together and let's figure out a way to make money right now at Bohemian. Let's work on solutions instead of just keep digging into the problem. So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Scott Swart, I'm sorry, I can't read the last name. It looks like S W, he's not here. Scott, calling Scott? No, Scott. Oh, there he is. Are you Scott?
Yes.
Come on up. How do you say your last name? Swad, I was pretty close, kinda like Swab, but different.
Yeah, all right. Well, basically, I'm very new to the city.
Your name and address.
Okay, Scott Swad, uh thirty-seven twenty Lake Osborne Drive. Okay, I'm very new to the city and I I think I I come a little fresh with it, you know, and I've been in the area since nineteen eighty. And so this is a bit of surprise to me, this little city, you know, so um I'm very much against this because I see uh we have so many things that we need to do in this city, so many things, but we're spent to the hilt. We can't do the basics that we need. We need crosswalks, we need, you know, pe- that's craziness. So I think that what we should do is spend our money on other things that we need rather than outspending and getting in such debt. I'm a, I'm a pay-as-you-go person. I don't believe in debt. And so it seems like this city is just spent to the hilt with all this stuff and we can't do the basics that absolutely need to be done, roads and different things like that, crosswalks and it all needs done. But she's just done, every time I want to do it, everybody says, well, we don't have the money, but obviously we have the money for some things. Okay, that's all.
Thank you. Olga Tommasello, followed by Deborah Robert. Mr. Brown, you have any more?
Uh, no, not for the side. I have something on the next side.
And then we're doing, Olga, is Olga here? Okay, Olga left. Uh, so, final word from Deborah Robert from the-
What about my-
Madam Mayor, we'll say that some people just put uh G N H on there, so if it's not-
What? Oh, what? I don't have it here.
I put about my-
Folks.
I put G N H on.
Hold on, hold on. And some people with G N, so we, so-
I have uh Cholo for H, but I had nothing for G.
Sorry, so we have more. So if you, if you put down G and H, you have one card, so you get to speak about that. Okay, um.
Yeah, quite much of that.
All right, slow down, everybody. We're looking, we're looking. Take it easy, just put it on.
If they put parking, keep in mind, both of these are related to the-
It's this long-term parking and it's, it's very generic.
And and some didn't put G or H.
Right.
So if there wasn't, those are under H.
Right. G, G and H. Right, so G. G, so if we take G and H, let's take a G, so we'll do G. There you go.
So you don't have any more up there?
I do for G and H, yeah.
Okay, yeah. And those are all ones that I've called.
Some people didn't put anything, but it says, news and things.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, because those all should be under uh G specifically.
I mean, we need, we may need a comfort break before this. All right, or did you leave? Oh. I missed you, I missed you, but I didn't know what you did. I didn't ask what you're doing. Okay. All right, so we have some more. Next up, Adam Youngblood. Well, well, we skipped Deborah. Deborah, do you want to come first before that? Okay, we'll go to you next.
Hello, Adam Youngblood, seventeen oh five North M Street. I just want to point out that I I I hope to see more transparency and consistency when looking through these studies and making sure that what you're voting on and how you vote for it is consistent and thorough. I sat here and watched as you guys scoffed at a affordable housing study that was suggesting enacting or, you know, uh uh enforcing a sixty-day short-term rental ban. That study you guys laughed at. That was a funny study. That study didn't mean much. This study you're taking is absolute fact. So I just want to make sure that as you move forward, you make sure that if you commission a study or if a study is presented to you, it's either laughed at or it's taken as fact. So since in this case you're taking it as fact, if the W Moda needs this parking structure so bad, I believe they should be contributing more than one eighth. I believe that during the prime peak hours of the museum, nine to five, there is ample parking downtown for their needs, for their facility. The only time we saw parking restricted was weekends, six P M and beyond. So is this parking garage really for Lake Worth or is it really just to attract the W Moda or is it something that they want? Because they're gonna make the million dollars back on the interest payments from the loan. So they basically get all of their parking for free for the museum that they're saying is gonna be such a beacon to the city, but yet they won't shell out for the parking they need to fill the aisles. So again, if you're going to scoff at some studies and then take other studies as pure fact, please be consistent and transparent. I mean, you're not even, you're not even granting the speaker the time of day. Please be transparent and consistent in how you react to these studies, how you approach them, the information you bring to us as your constituency, and spend our money wisely. I'm not totally against parking garage. I think a lot of us would love to see parking downtown. We are against paid parking and if this is the fast track to that, I'm with him. I do not want to see paid parking downtown. It is one of the things that makes it great. But I I also know we can't stay stagnant. We need money to build all the crosswalks and to help the schools and where else is money gonna come from but visitors, tourism, um, but-
Thank you, that's time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Peggy Fisher? Followed by Deborah Roberts. I'll find your card somewhere and then after that, um, Marie Zook, Zooker, Zooking.
Hey there, uh Deborah Robert, one two seven South K Street. Um, I am completely for um the garage and the public-private partnership. Um, I just thought to say, the cheapest and best way we're gonna ever do a garage is with a private partnership, public-private partnership. You guys went to W Moda and talked to them about this and I I believe full-heartedly in it. Tammerack, by the way, I'm Janet Serrano found this out too. Um, Tammerack was all over the W Moda project. They just couldn't get into alignment because they needed a lot more affordable housing at the time and it just didn't seem to line up. But they love the museum project and they're disappointed they don't have it. Um, I trust what we've heard or last CRA meeting and the vote that was all but one in favor. And I heard the voices of several businesses owners who depend on parking downtown. I wish we could hear more from them at these meetings because we sure hear a lot from going door to door. But they have businesses to run and they depend on the people who care about their needs and a lot of us do. The larger places that remain empty in our downtown remain so, though they're desirable, especially the Gulf Stream and promise W Moda, but they can't be filled out until unless we get more spaces to ensure proprietors can reach their plate counts or customer count already established elsewhere. The promise of a garage being under construction will take the stop button off potential tenants who otherwise would have given up our empty spaces, giving up our empty spaces a chance for life. Our county, especially West Palm Beach, is becoming increasingly compressed as a destination. It's getting hard to move there. We never want to be anything like that. We don't. But we have to recognize we will become a respite for those who want to dine and shop at a more quaint, less overwhelming destination. They're going to drive here and we need to be ready for more vehicles daily and nightly. The Bohemian will fill out over time. It's gonna take a while and it was a mistake, but you know what? Once we get that into an artisan area, which is bound to be with the next time, you, ten years, great. But in the meantime, yes, we should find solutions like have the valet parking go over there, have employees shuttled back and forth. That's a great idea. But by the time this garage is completed, we will need it. And I appreciate all the work our staff or CRA and you on the commission have done to get us this far and I thank you for it. I hope tonight you stay on course for having the vision to take this through and thank you so much.
Thank you. Peggy Fisher, followed by Marie Longswicken, Liz Wickard. Is Marie here? Calling once.
Peggy Fisher, North A Street. Madam Mayor, I apologize for raising my voice. I could not tolerate the disrespect being shown to you as chair of this meeting, which has tend to gone on a lot of times and is very upsetting. And I've seen it for many, many years with the same individual. Um, W Moda came to the city and for the museum. And then the city went to W Moda about the parking garage. It's not W Moda's parking garage, it's the city's parking garage. And all this bit about paid parking, where you paid to park and you go to the beach. Either if you're a resident, you get a resident decal or you park in one of the five hundred and some odd parking spaces that the county demanded and a former commissioner agreed that we would have for the county for getting five million dollars from the county. So um paid parking is not something new for part of our public areas. Uh, this constant lecturing is not what we need. And I was in a meeting on Sunday night and listened to a commissioner say, tell me or make a statement how all of you were gonna vote regarding on-street parking and paying for it. And I found that a very interesting statement because I didn't think that was true, but if it was, it would have been a sunshine violation. And if it wasn't, when someone was making a statement at a public meeting to residents about something that wasn't true. Thank you.
Thank you. Marie. Okay, Marie, calling once, calling twice. Uh, Pam Chirola. And say your last name, your other last name. Is it Klain? Klain, thank you, because I couldn't sure that was an L. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
It's so funny, I was gonna phonetically spell it on there too.
You had a problem. But by Amy Mitch Mahalik. Mahalik.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and fellow commissioners. Um, boy, it feels like old school week for me to hearing all this hoo-ha up here on the dais. I thought you were gonna call me first because I was most for-
Name and address for the record, please.
Me, Ham Chirolo Klain, four ten North Ocean Place. Um, I thought you were gonna call me first because I I was so familiar with what it's like to be bullied by a fellow commissioner who decides not to follow Robert's Rules of Order. Just, just want to make sure that we all realize that Robert's Rules of Order are what we use here and that's to show respect and uh and I feel bad for the mayor that that was shown to her. Um, the current commission has been aware of the parking issues. Everyone's aware of the parking issues. Anyone who's not aware of the lack of parking, especially during peak hours, is mistaken, okay? Um, first of all, I didn't like the Friday meeting. You had a meeting for about ten minutes and uh basically one commissioner decided to say that, so if you approve of the parking garage, that means you approve of paid parking. If you approve of the parking garage, you approve of paid parking. If you approve of the parking garage, you have to answer me, answer me, is that correct? That's what happened in that pre-meeting that lasted about ten minutes. And I was just flabbergasted. I thought, wow, he must have taken lessons with someone I know. Um, anyway, you use tactics to distract, confuse, create a wedge issue when there is no need to be. In the very short pre-meeting, again, suggesting that was just really wrong. I was here in two thousand eighteen and people talked about this and W G I came to the table and said, it's gonna cost you, you're gonna have to do paid parking. And I fought with the city manager at that time because I'm still totally against paid parking on the streets. I think there's a lot of things the city can do first, like enforce the parking. Make it not four hours, make it two hours, chalk it, have a full department, chalk it. You know how much money the town of Palm Beach made for gazillion years, chalking and actually enforcing the parking, creating employee parking areas, creating resident parking spaces so that they can park in front of their homes. There's a lot of that stuff the city doesn't enforce and the Bohemian, which everyone likes to make fun of, the Bohemian was created for the lack of people voting for enough parking at housing developments that were being built west of Dixie Highway because they didn't have enough spaces, because everyone drives a bike now. Nobody drives a car, we don't need enough spaces. It was created for that reason and we didn't want to have to pay to maintain the garage because if things went wrong, we didn't want to have that financial liability in it and we had three new projects that were being developed. You had the Bohemian that was being developed.
Thank you, that's time.
Being developed. You have Vanilla Isis Project being developed.
That's, that's time, thank you.
I'll obey the rules if you will.
Mahalik, there she is, followed by Sarah Rossi.
Hello, yes, Amy Mahalik, twenty twenty thirty-two Callier Avenue. Um, this is a really big financial investment and I think that there are still many things to look at and consider. Um, the city is already in debt from what I've heard and parking is not a critical issue at this moment. It's only if all the businesses are full in the future. Uh, so what happens if you enact paid parking and people stop coming? Um, or you don't get enough revenue from that to cover the new garage? Uh, I'm really against paid parking and I agree uh that if this is the fast track to that, then I don't approve. Um, I would like to see money invested in a dedicated circuit loop to our existing garage. Need the crosswalks across Dixie to make it safer because if it's painted, drivers see it more uh easily. Also, that can be a dedication to our biggest attraction, the Street Painting Festival. You can kind of paint those crosswalks to look like the Street Painting Festival. You have that year round. Um, you can also add a pedestrian crosswalk at First Ave South and of course increase the valet parking. So I think we should invest in fully utilizing the Bohemian now, making that small incremental growth. Um, this will not only improve our city, but improve the parking situation. Um, I also think you could put the property up for bid for W Moda uh and maybe there's a better partnership that we're not seeing, uh because we're just blinders on to this. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Rossi. Sarah Rossi, is she here? Okay. Is anybody in the hallway? Sarah, Sarah Rossi, are you here? No, okay, thank you. Uh, Dame Farar. Uh, I apologize if I can't reach her, um, name ring. Is she here? Okay. Charlotte Taylor.
There's an old saying, there's no love-
Name and address first, please.
Six oh nine Lake Avenue.
Name.
Charlo Taylor.
Sorry.
There's an old saying, there's no love greater than the love of spending somebody else's money. There's an old saying, there's no love greater than the love of spending somebody else's money. A responsible government retains the land for the citizens. They don't give it away. They don't cut deals. It should be always retained by, for the citizens. Especially you don't give away land to develop. Government officials always told me Lakewood has no money. So I ask now, why the big giveaway? The government should not underwrite private equity projects. It's a loss for taxpayers and a win for developers. When no one uses the museum and the proposed garage, which is justified by the developer for the $1 million we're told it will bring in, Lakewood will be further in debt. Our taxes are already high. When I purchased my property 10 years ago, the tax, property taxes were 1,600. They're pushing 11,000 now. The person who owned the property before me, when he leased it, got $300 more a month than I do 10 years later. I, I'm just looking out for the people in Lakewood. The existing garage, I'm told, oh, the existing garage. This is why I like to get the information from you. I, I understood it brought in $75 a day. That one that we talked about, the leasing, is that true? Do you know?
You don't answer questions, but we.
You don't answer questions? Well, I'm told that it brings in 78, $75 a day.
Email.
On average. Yeah, but it's nice to talk in front of people because it gives them something to think about.
Thank you. That's time.
I believe, I believe in full disclosure. Okay?
Thank you.
I'm not finished.
Well, your time is up.
But your time is up, ma'am. Thank you. Everybody gets two minutes.
I know people, other people spoke twice.
Ma'am, you're two minutes in, sorry. Thank you. Kim Stokes.
Well, I'm saying $9 million for 51 parking spaces.
Thank you.
Is problematic.
Thank you. Kim Stokes. Everybody followed by Catherine Coleman. Followed by Catherine Colmeyer.
Kim Stokes, 1321 North L Street. I'm almost speechless. This parking garage plan is so bad that it's hard to explain to regular people without sounding like I'm exaggerating. But here's, I'll try, three points. The city and CRA spent $4.5 million to buy land downtown, which they're giving to the developer of Womota for free. They could have used that money for the public parking garage instead of having to borrow $3.5 million from that developer to pay back. That's crazy. Number two, the CRA is also giving a $2 million infrastructure grant to that developer for their own infrastructure needs for their residential only parking garage. Why aren't we using that money for our public parking garage instead of taking out a loan from the developer that we have to pay back? They're voting to waive the developers in lieu of parking fees for just $1 million without asking staff to tell you or asking a commissioner to direct staff to tell you what they actually owe us. It could be three or four times that amount. And you may be overlooking millions of dollars in those parking fees that the developer owes and using that for the public parking garage instead of taking out a loan from the developer. And now you're going to look at the public in the eye with a straight face and say, look how much money we're saving in interest. And that is laughable. By voting on this agreement that favors the developer more than the taxpayers of Lakewood Beach, you are neglecting your duties as public servants to the city of Lakewood Beach. And by actively squashing information from being provided to the commission and the public before you take this vote is definitely negligence of your duty.
Thank you. Catherine Cole, folks, really don't make, don't make me ask you to stop. Catherine Colmeyer followed by Tom Conboy.
Catherine Colmeyer, 503 First Avenue South. I've just got a few kind of low-key things to say. Walking around Lakewood Beach, I see a lot of parking lots that are empty nearly all of the time. They're privately owned, maybe by churches, maybe by private businesses. I think with a bit of creativity and imagination, there are a lot of ways you could solve the parking problems that maybe require businesses that use valet parking to lease spaces from churches and from businesses that close around five or six. Improve the signage in Lakewood. Have a parking app for where you can find parking. Let's see, extend the use of circuit and have either circuit or another kind of shuttle service going from the Bohemian down to employees. So employees can park at the Bohemian. Maybe they can get free parking there. And late at night, if they can have a shuttle to the Bohemian, that'll make it safer. I think, I mean, this is just off the top of my head. And you know, chatting with people, then you could have a parking task force. You know, like you have boards, you could have a group of people with a liaison, a city staff members liaison. There's so many things you can do because if we have a greatly parking garage here, another one. And yet I, I walk around and right next door to me, there's a church parking lot with 150 spaces. It's always empty. In fact, that church has been sold. I think Vice Mayor Malaga used to go there and it's been empty for the last six months. But you know, even when that church was full, it was empty most of the time. So I think there are a whole load of things that could be done with a bit of imagination. And maybe it would take some working out with legal issues, liability issues, if you lease from private businesses. But it could be done. It's better than making a parking garage when we've already used so much land for parking.
Thank you. That's time.
R is king.
Thank you. Tom Conboy. Followed by Tyler Chapman.
Tom Conboy, business owner, 30 South M Street. Many of the business owners I've talked to along Lake and Lucerne do want a garage. They do not want paid parking downtown. And they really want that garage to be non-paid parking in the garage. Everything I see accounts for the garage making money to pay for itself, which means paid parking. It's not going to be successful if we don't charge for parking outside of the garage. So if you want to give the business owners what they want, which is a free garage, the way to do that is to get rid of Womota in the whole picture, sell the properties and build the garage with the money that you get from those properties. That's a concept to think about because this museum is not going to add any real value. We already have a free museum downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Tyler Chapman, followed by David Sims. Name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Tyler Chapman, 1224 16th Avenue North. I run the Lakewoodian. We are trying to get information from the city. I sent you all emails on Sunday. I haven't heard back from any of you except for McVoy. Thank you, sir, about this issue. There are questions to be asked. Will this development lead to paid parking in our downtown corridor? It certainly seems from the professionals, the professionals who study these things that it will. As Tom just said, as many people have said, when you build these things and they need to make money, they can't be competing against free parking all over our downtown and all up and down our city streets. It's not feasible. So what you're pushing for when you push for this is paid parking in those corridors. And I don't think that's wild to say or to suggest, and I don't think it's rude to suggest as it was suggested in the pre-agenda meeting. I want more transparency. I want you guys to communicate with the public better. I want to hear the answers to Chris's questions. Are they sometimes long-winded? Yes, they're sometimes long-winded. That's not anyone's preference. I get it. But he has good questions. Get into them sooner, sure. But interrupting him doesn't help us get there faster and I want answers to these questions. I think the public wants answers to these questions. So please make the effort to do that. I read through the agenda packets. It's not easy work. And often it leads to a lot more questions than they provide. You read them, starting with few questions, you end up with dozens of questions. We need a way to get that to the public and I think you all are responsible for doing that. Our election turnouts are low, very low, embarrassingly low. And that's because people are not well-informed enough about what happens in the city to feel like they have a stake in what happens. You're responsible for getting that information to them. The dais is a place to do it. Getting home early is not an excuse for why we can't hear questions posed to the dais. I want you to take your responsibility seriously and I think being respectful up there helps. And I just.
Thank you. That's time.
Thank you.
What is it Lakewoodian?
We're a nonprofit journalistic outlet. You will see us on Facebook, but we also have a Substack. We're on Instagram. We're working on getting on Blue Sky.
You don't have access to you. I'm asking for my own information because.
How would you like to get in touch with us? I mean, you can email me at lakewoodian.com.
Asking because we had a newspaper that went away.
Right. And so we are on Substack, which is an outlet that journalists and, you know, small journalists use.
People listen.
No, thank you so much.
Thank you.
David Sims, followed by Michael McKeech.
David Sims, 715 North L Street. So before the Bohemian was built, was there a presentation in a meeting like this where there were studies and analysis on how great it's going to be and how much of an asset it's going to be? Because it cost the city 2.4 million and right now it's losing 63,000 a year. Now, you put up a bunch of money, you put up a bunch of, we've seen a lot of numbers tonight about lots of things and spaces and you know, you're saying you'll get about a million revenue from the garage and you get a million revenue from street parking. Now, the revenue from the Bohemian right now is about 37,000. Now, I've gone downtown, you know, on the few busy times like Friday, Saturday nights, maybe Thursday or Sunday. And the parking area is fairly full. But you know, you go a little bit off lake, you go on the side streets and there's some parking on Second Avenue. So my point is, is that if you have paid parking in the garage and paid street parking, a lot of people are going to pay for street parking. Is the garage going to be full? Are you going to get a million in revenue from both? We're making a huge commitment here. Now, I know you really want the garage. You really want Womota happen. But you don't want to push it through. I mean, we're making a very long-term commitment here. You're not going to be able to go back. You should really like, look at the numbers and really consider, what are we getting ourselves into? And don't go through with it until you get it right. I think we should look at other options first before we go to this parking garage. Can we work with church, the churches and the nearby businesses like the paint shop? And see if we can leave spaces from them.
Thank you. That's time.
Thank you. Michael McKeech.
Michael McKeech from the Lakewood Playhouse, 713 Lake Avenue. A lot, one of the reasons I'm in favor of this garage is, first of all, the fact that it's behind our building is a plus. But I wouldn't mind if it was three blocks away. We bring in, during the season, we bring in about 1,000 people every week to downtown Lakewood. And we're only one business. When we do a show, like we're going to be doing the producers in two weeks, buy your tickets now. We, we bring in 1,000 people on Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Within three days, we bring in 1,000 people. Now, I realize they all don't drive their own car. But we recognize 15 years ago, the parking situation downtown. And we went through the lengthy process of getting a valet permit from the Department of Transportation here in Florida, which was not an easy thing. Now, our valet is being used not only by us, even though we're responsible for it, but people on, businesses on the 600, the 700 and the 800 block all get used to that valet because people will park their car. And the valet has arrangements. We're talking about churches and private businesses and banks. Our valet has arrangements with those and they take those cars and park them on the private parking spaces. So they're removing 40 to 50 cars out of the city parking spaces right off the bat. But is that enough? No, it isn't. When I come down, I come down a lot of times in the evening for the theater. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, not a problem. Thursday, Friday, Saturday, I can't find a parking space. When the CRA removed those three buildings on K Street, I now park on that grass. Either that or I've got to, either that or I've got to find a spot in front of somebody's house. And usually when we have an event like the, like a parade or the Street Painting Festival, whatever, some of the residents take their cars and move them out in front of their house. And that makes it a little bit more difficult and I don't blame them because it is their property. So do I want a garage? Not really. But is it necessary? Absolutely. And like I said, we recognized this 15 years ago. So, and do I want to pay? No. We're, you know, we have about 15 employees that we would have to be buying parking spaces for. So do we really want to do that? No. So I'm, I'm hoping there'd be another solution to that. But it is necessary.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Michelle Sylvester.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. Michelle Sylvester, Paws on the Avenue, 525 Lake Avenue. Paws on the Avenue has been with Lakewood 25 years. We're an anchor in Lakewood. We have three dedicated spots that we pay for behind our store. On a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, even Sunday, as Michael just mentioned, often our parking spaces get cannibalized by not our customers. We also have this parking valet arrangement where they cannibalize those spaces too. So we, we don't want to be jerks and, but you know, towing sign, but we're open on Friday and Saturday night till eight or nine o'clock at night. And so we have those spaces for our customers. We currently in the business community in the corridor, in the downtown corridor are at about 70% and that's a generous mark occupancy. That is not ideal. You walk by building after building after building, block after block, and there's vacancies. We need to be at 90, 95% occupancy right now. I was here in 2018 when WGI did this whole survey here. We had the same conversations. We were tight on parking then and we are still there. We're still way behind the eight ball. Neighbors don't need to have our customers schlepping a 40-pound, 35-pound bag of food two blocks down in front of their house. Just as street painting happens, yes, we have an arrangement with the college to take a bus in to bring people in. That's all well and fine. But if you expect to grow our downtown corridor, make it vibrant, make it appealing for people to come, we need to have parking for them. Does anybody like paying for parking? No. But we have to pay for a building and this Womota project is the best option I have seen in the last seven years. And nothing has happened in seven years. Nothing. Parking enforcement hasn't happened to great reality. We need to move forward with this project, the Womota project and with this parking project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Erica Gitting.
Vossel in here.
Let's just do them all together. Erica here, Erica Gitting? And we, we're going to take a comfort break very soon. Go ahead. Is Erica here? Jill Carlin. Is Jill here? I'm sorry. You get me?
Given the one with the white piece of paper on it.
Yeah.
She has to have it read.
Oh, okay. Okay. Jill Carlin, 2381 Sunset Ave, number 205. I love our adorable 20th century South Florida beach vernacular architectural heritage industry. Beautifully exemplified in Old Town and our charming downtown. Before you walked in this room tonight, before doing your due diligence on this project, before giving away our most. on this project, before giving away our most precious resource to a developer from New York for pository for his, quote, "his stuff," unquote, you had your mind made up, you had already cast your vote to irresponsibly agree to give this dude everything he wants or more. Congratulations, your future. Congratulations, your, I don't know, Lake Worth Beach will on the note that Mr. Weiner will, will default. I don't know, default on the note that Mr. Weiner will have for your reckless decision. Congratulations, you are responsible for the big yellow taxi paved paradise ripper parking lot. Take all the trees and put them in a tree museum. Charge all the people a dollar and a half just to see them. I want to start singing in a minute. Just to see, don't, don't always seem to go that you don't know what it's like till it's gone. And that was during the I could have sung, I could have sung, but I spared you. Okay. Erica Esch. Erica? No? And Jill Carlin, please detach. Okay, we're going to do G and H altogether. Let's just do it.
I believe the clerk has
Oh, quite a few. Well, we'll take a comfort break before that happens. Now, Michelle, okay, a couple of people to separate thing for G and H. One by the app, but you want to come back up with people that are zones. Okay, well, I didn't call on you yet. I'm sorry. I had that, I had that, I had that, I have a few. I'm just asking, Penahote is still here? Penahote is still here? Ramsey? Ian, you know? Alexander? I know who you are. Catherine Colmeyer has spoken, and Catherine, are you still here? Okay. John, don't get me, Jay Powell's here. Okay, so there's only two, Cam has left, I believe. And taking Fisher, Peggy, do you want to speak again? No, okay. So, so, Michelle Sylvester.
Thank you, Michelle Sylvester, 525 Lake Avenue. So, you know, Paws on the Avenue has been around 25 years this year. We've, we've enjoyed hiring Lake Worth locals, and we are a holistic pet supply store. We've adopted out 400, over 400 kittens through animal care control. You know, we're generally good guys. We want to continue supporting our community. We feel very strongly, you know, as being a business that's going to be backing up to this WMO project, literally, we are going to be the ones that are the most affected. Our business is going to be most affected. During COVID, we were not closed one day. We made adjustments and accommodations to our business plan. We instituted delivery, free delivery throughout the freaking county. Okay, we did a lot. We sanitized everything. We kept everybody safe, not only ourselves, none of our staff. You know, we were very, very blessed, but we were very, very spot on and prudent and taking care of business. And that's how we can support our community. We, we need this project in this town. The tax base alone for the 110 units that this is going to be put on is necessary. These units, yes, there's only going to be eight that are affordable housing. You're going to have 102 that are market rate. If they're 200,000, 250,000, $300,000, whatever, the tax base is huge, and that's going to help lift our city. And it's going to be able to pave the crosswalks. And we're going to be able to put lighting down these alleyways that we can, you know, expand into the side alleys and expand our downtown corridor, bring more people and more vibrancy and more employment to our town. That's what we need. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is Penahote still here, or did he go? Don Faust.
John Faust, 414 South M Street. Apologies, when you were changing G to A and back to G, you said, put the word garage on there, so.
Here you are.
That's Evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Let me get to my scribbled notes. Yesterday, no, no parade. No advertised parade. We, we have a small office that our family owns downtown for 36 years with our own private five spaces in the back, and we had eight cars packed in there because the city lots were full. Where I'm going with this, and maybe I'll repeat it a few times, is please move forward on this garage. Please move forward on this. Street Paints Festival, squishy parking, no such thing. It's like, I live four blocks behind the office, and people park five and six blocks. It's not, it's not like the downtown parking absorbs extra parking. It just doesn't happen. You know, there's, there's no less than four valet stops on Lake and Lucerne. It's like, that's an indicator that there's a parking problem. My wife wanted me to add this, which makes sense. There's, there's a couple of people shared this with us, and then it's like absolutely how we feel. When we visit, I'll switch this, when we visit West Palm Beach or Boynton Beach, if we can't park a block or so away from our destination, we keep going. We don't park in the neighborhoods. We don't, we don't park where we don't. It's like, for all of us here in this room watching, we all live here. We know where we're going. So even if you live two miles away and you drive to downtown, you don't think twice about parking three blocks from your destination. But when you travel to, you know, a strange destination, that's, that's a concern.
That's time.
Thank you. That's good enough. Please move forward.
Tuesday, Gilliam? Tuesday, though. It's Wednesday. Ian Blake? Ian Blake? Name and address, please.
Ian Blake, Boynton Beach, friend of the court.
Could you actually give your address, though?
Oh, 7122 Le Chalet Boulevard, Boynton Beach, Florida.
Thank you.
A lot of people have made some of the comments that I wanted to make, but starting with the, the presentation that was given earlier and gave some concrete numbers starts from the premise that there is paid parking in downtown. Like, it cannot be the case that people will pay for a parking spot unless the other free options are taken. So the assumption, and a lot of people have already said, they don't want paid parking downtown. I get, we all want to do the right thing. We have different ideas as to what the right thing is. And, and that's going to cause a lot of problems. Sure, no problem, but if we, if it is a requirement that downtown have paid parking, you can run that experiment right now. A number of people have made other suggestions as to like leasing on these empty lots, expanding the tram. Other types of options are smaller in scope and don't automatically commit the city to a multi-year, multimillion-dollar construction plan. And you do have some amount of time before the doomsday Florida legislation comes down that requires that, like, you can no longer do your job, which is very weird. There, there's not a requirement that you act immediately. There's a lot of tensions right now, and you have the opportunity to run the experiment that would allow for. So because there's a lot of enthusiasm in both directions, I, I live far away. I come here because I love it. This place is, is amazing. I understand that there is a desire for parking. Maybe this isn't it. Venture capital is often, their number one concern is make money. Your number one concern is the quality of life for the residents. Those are purposes. Sometimes they're together, not all the time, and you can run the experiment.
Thank you very much. Alexander. Chicas, is that it?
Contemptuous.
Contempt.
It's like you're sneezing.
Contemptuous.
Contemptuous. Alexander Contetius, 1424 North L. I'm very hangry right now.
Yeah.
I'm not going to say
We're here too.
I know, and God bless y'all for doing what you do. I don't always agree with everything. I'm opposed to the garage as it is right now. I'm not going to repeat everything everybody said, but I'm worried about the financial solvency of this city. I'm young. I'm going to live here a long time. My son's eight years old. I just, hearing from Mr. McVoy and other speakers, it just appears there's a bit more homework that needs to be done by the commission, by the mayor, to determine if this is the right thing for the city. And if it is, how we can get the most out of WMO to contribute to this? Because I did hear that because WMO is going to be here, and they're going to need more spots and more parking for their patrons, that's kind of the impetus for this garage. I know they talked about in 2018, but that's their current impetus because WMO is here. Are they only chipping in 1/8 of that? If this is going to be assisting them so much. I'd ask y'all to reconsider, to vote no, go back to negotiating table. I've got the vibe that three members here are going to vote yes, no matter what we all say. So if you move forward, my other concern is how this affects our beautiful little town. Please make the design pretty. There are those parking garages in South Beach that are covered in green. Please make this pretty for our city. Don't, don't, sorry? Yes, ma'am. Yes, please.
And it's going to be behind the theater, so it's not
But that's where, that's where I'm going with this. If y'all are going to vote yes, please make it look good.
Thank you.
Enjoy your dinners.
When will that happen? Jenny Powell? Do they more over there?
No, no.
Followed by Ramsey. We're going to take a comfort break when these two speak.
Jenny Powell, 224 North Palm Way. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. A lot of what I was going to say has been said. I'll try not to repeat too much. I think you're all aware of the Strong Towns Initiative, and Lake Worth Beach has a chapter now, if that's what it's called. We had a meeting on Sunday, and there were some business owners there that were concerned citizens. And the consensus to me seemed pretty clear that we should explore all options. And according to Strong Towns, there's, before a parking garage is built, there's two other things that should be done. The first one is to look at all of the options and expand those, maximize those. And I, I don't see that that's yet been done. Some of it, maybe. I did look on the website. We have a parking map, believe it or not. And I've asked for that. However, it needs a lot of work. There's no addresses on where the parking areas. They're, they're outlined in blue, and you have to zoom in. It's like all of Palm Beach County when you first pull the map up on, on the website. So we need locations and addresses on there. We need to mark the one-way streets for our visitors that come from out of town. We need a downloadable, printable version. I'm not going to go into everything. People have mentioned using the church parking lots and so forth. That is being done in Boca. I don't, I don't know, that's been talked about ad nauseam. A church, I attended a musical event at a church, and it was, the lot was shared with a restaurant or downtown. I'm not sure what the arrangement was. Enhanced signage. We talked about expanding the circuit. But I, the consensus is to look at everything else. The next thing is to perhaps look at a lower-key parking plan for downtown. Don't jump into an $8.5 million project. I feel like if we do that, as has been mentioned, we are doing this as a favor to the developer. And there's, and then, and then we had paid parking on top of that. This is not fair to the residents.
Thank you. And last, but certainly not least, our very own Ramsey McCloud.
I do not consider this an honor. Nemo is swimming in front of you.
Oh, yes.
Ramsey McCloud, 24 South C Street. I've listened to everybody, and I've been a resident here for over 30 years. And I will say, I do like to come to downtown. I like to come on Saturdays to Pickers and Around at Rudy's Pub on South J Street. There's no parking there at noon. I have had to go as far as behind, pause on the avenue to find a parking space and walk back to the venue I want to visit. So for those that say parking's an issue, it doesn't have to be through the peak hours that WGI has listed. It's a consistent and growing situation in our city. Do we need a parking garage? I'm absolutely for it because I shouldn't have to schlep. And I absolutely will never, or will I ever want to have to park in front of somebody else's house? Because at the Street Painting Festival last year and the year before, I live on 24 South C Street, which is just down from the Roundabout. And I've had people park in front of my house and walk downtown. So we talk about the Bohemian, they didn't even go park there. They parked in front of my house, and they're willing to walk that far. Besides all the walking they're going to do. But long-term, sorry, short, if we do parking, $5 for two hours downtown, that's a nice meal and a nice leisurely evening. Try that in Delray. You got an extra $25 to $30? That's what your parking's going to cost. West Palm Beach is going to be close to that, too. Oh, and where are the downtown areas for? Oh, Lantana, that would be the Key Lime House. High Paluxo doesn't exist. We're in competition with Delray and West Palm Beach. We have to step up our game. You complain about potholes. You complain about sidewalks. Where's the money coming from? We have to invest in our own city and provide the services that bring the people here to spend the money and support our downtown businesses that are not only in the corridor, but the ones in the side streets too, without continuing to put the burden of downtown parking on the poor owners and residences that are just a block or two off the corridor because you don't want a parking garage and you don't want to pay for parking, but you want the services. People, we have to find a compromise. We have to look for the future of our city. If you want to fill the downtown storefronts, you have to give the parking garage an opportunity to bring those people here, to see how great our city is, and to spend their money here instead of giving it away to big conglomerate towns like West Palm Beach and Delray Beach.
Thank you, that's time.
We are the gem.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to take a comfort break, and then we will have the clerk read the public comments with us. Okay, we're going to take a comfort break and then we will have the clerk read the public comments with us. Okay, we're going to take a comfort break and then we will have the clerk read the public comments with us. Yeah. Okay, let's get back started. It's almost 10 o'clock. Everybody, come on, let's go.
Thank you.
Someone remind me, it's so much fun to be a lawyer. Divorce law.
That. I don't think.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, it's nine fifty-three. We've reconvened and we're live.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, it's ten to ten. We have business other than this on the agenda. We have heard all the public comments from the room. For both of those A and B, G and H have been read. The A, B, G, H have been read. I am looking for a motion, and if I don't get it, I'll move to, I'll do it myself. To waive the reading of the public comments on the agenda from the, that were sent in. We have time, we have to get out of here by eleven o'clock, and I don't want to have the, we need to finish this agenda, correct? Is there anything on this agenda that we can just, oh, never mind, wait till the next time? I think you said no.
Uh, no, because we, obviously, the budget amendment is very important, and yeah.
All right, so if someone would make a motion to waive the reading of the online agenda item comments. All right, I will make a motion to waive the reading, the oral reading of the online comments. We, I would like all of us to confirm that we read or will read the comments ourselves.
I have read everyone. I do it just before the.
I read everyone up until five-ten.
I, I didn't, but I will, because I was looking forward to Melissa reading them to me. But I promise that I will. So my other.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Wait, can I just ask one question? Uh, the other thing that I'd like to add to that is, if it isn't too hard, Melissa, if you can, like, look at it and just see it, if you could give us a yay versus nay.
I can't.
Okay, thank you. Then just, yeah, as long as we all promise that we have read them or will read them, I will make the motion to waive oral presentation of the online comments.
Do I have a second? Mr. Ronaldo, are you still with us? Yes, he is.
Yeah, I'm here.
We have a motion and a second to waive the reading.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Uh, Ms. Malaga. To waive the online reading, which we all have read. I have read everyone.
Is that for all of the online comments? Because I have comments on items other than this.
Oh, just G and H.
Which one, G?
A, B, G.
Could we ask how many comments there are?
She's gonna read them, and she's gonna tally pros and cons.
I can't.
Oh, you could not do that? Okay.
Well, we can all, I mean, I've read them. I know what they're saying.
There's like sixty. We'd be here forever. Okay, so.
There was, I think, eighty-seven total comments, though.
There are eighty-six comments online.
So we need to get some work done, and I have actually read them, and I understand. So do I, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Hi.
Nate.
Ronaldo?
Nay.
Okay, well, three to two. We've got to get, we have an agenda to finish.
Um, and while we're making motions, it's nine fifty-six. Can I have a motion to extend to eleven?
Motion to extend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I want to name that. Fair enough. Okay, so we have a motion. We have, on the, on item A, which had been G. Uh, we have a motion. We have a second. We have heard public comment from the people here. All in favor?
Did we have any?
Oh, we haven't done that yet. Oh, God. That's right. I haven't either. So, okay, so we have, okay, it's ten o'clock. I'm gonna cut the time down. Usually, we keep it a half hour, but we have other things to do. We have two votes on this, and we've got other things to do. So I'm gonna limit our time each to. Ronaldo, you want comments on this, correct? On this item?
Yes, I'm, yeah.
Okay, okay, but in the, in the essence of time that we have here, I'm gonna limit to four minutes each. That's four, that's still sixteen minutes. So. Twenty. My math is not good.
I mean, don't count yourself.
It's five sixteen. I'll just be quiet. Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. We have public, we have commissioner comments now. Mr. McFoy, why don't you go first? Madam Clerk, will you time us to four minutes?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Have we done a study of the economic cost to our businesses of paid parking? We've talked about various kinds of numbers. But I've heard very consistently in the comments, and I've heard very consistently from businesses, they do not want paid parking. I think it, from everything I'm hearing, it's pretty clear that if you're gonna do a paid parking garage, it's not gonna work if you have free parking. So I think we need to be very conscious that we are moving forward, and as someone mentioned in the comments, very likely, three of us are going to vote in favor of this thing. You are voting for paid parking downtown against the wishes, and without a study of the economic cost of doing that. Have we done a survey of any sort to try to assess whether people want paid parking downtown? I've heard no enthusiasm for that. So you, again, you're moving forward clearly without information on the wishes, but you've given, been given some indications, all of which were, nobody wants paid parking. Um, I'd kind of like to ask all of my fellow commissioners, who here is in favor of paid parking? Own up that, that that's what you want to do? Crickets. That's kind of what I thought. Nobody's gonna own up to it. They're just gonna vote for giving something away to the developers. Uh, do we have a clear indication of how many spaces are going to be required by the museum? As I said, if you count it as what was, what we were told it would be in October, thirty-three thousand square feet of museum, not of retail or storage or whatever, it says thirty-three thousand square feet of museum. That's an institution. By that, by our rules, that's a hundred and sixty-five spaces. What I'm seeing in this contract, which I hope all of you are also seeing, is, quote, "The city agrees to make available to the public and patrons of the W. Moda Project Museum at least fifty parking spaces." That is not fifty to the public and fifty to the museum. It's fifty somehow shared between the public and the patrons. That's what we're guaranteeing for eight and a half million, plus whatever you want to call the cost of the land that we're giving him for free. Throw in another half a million. Now you're looking at maybe ten million. We get fifty spaces. We are taking away a hundred and nine. Now, I'm not very good at math. The mayor and I are both kind of, we don't do math that well. But my book, when you take away a hundred and five and you give fifty, you're fifty-five in the hole for ten million bucks without doing surveys of whether this is going to economically benefit the businesses, or whether the businesses want paid parking. I think what we're doing, it was pretty clear. Everybody has told me over the, over a while that, um, this parking garage, it's not about W. Moda. It's very clearly about W. Moda. It's to meet their parking requirements because they don't want to do it on site. They could be required to do it on site. You could hold them to paying twenty-five thousand for those hundred and sixty-five spaces, in which case, that would be a lot more money. Somebody else smarter than me can do the calculation, but it's a lot bigger than a million. So we wouldn't have to do a loan. You could, as somebody said, if they're so serious that they need the parking, pay up at the full rate. And nobody here knows what the required number of spaces, and that's required number of spaces for the museum is really.
That's four minutes.
Is the actual number of spaces that this building, this garage and museum are gonna dump onto our streets.
Thank you, Mr. McFoy. Who wants to go next? Ms. Malaga?
Okay, thank you. So a couple of things. Listening to everybody in the room, reading all the emails, online comments, doing my research, and being a business owner downtown who's been here for fifteen years. A lot of the reason that there's empty storefronts is because when people come to look at renting a space, the first thing they say is, where are my customers gonna park? There's no place for places anyone to park downtown, which is why I had my business where I had it, because I wanted a parking lot. I paid premium rent, but I had my own parking lot, which, by the way, so for us and everybody else's patrons often use. So that's number one. You have empty storefronts because most of the businesses do not have dedicated parking for their clients. That's a bad business plan. Parking garage can help with that. Number two, we're looking at possibly losing property taxes soon. We're looking at losing tax-free municipal bonds. We are looking at major financial implications to our city. And while everybody wants infrastructure, roads fixed, lights fixed, sidewalks, even though we don't own Lake and Lucerne, Sixth and Tenth, and Federal Sixteenth, all those little side streets all belong to us. If we do not put a financial plan together, I'm telling you right now, God is my witness, you in three to five years in this, in this city, we are not going to have a way to sustain ourselves. And I'm gonna very much go on the record for, as a business owner downtown, I am for paid parking. I have been for five years, because as somebody who has paid very much attention to the parking issue, I share a parking lot with UPS, twelve spots. I went into UPS today just to drop something off. You know the person the lady said to me? This parking is a nightmare. People can't even pull in because they're double parking against the bushes. Okay, I understand, parking's an issue. I've been fighting for getting eighty-eight parking spots on Lake and Lucerne for four years. Simplest thing, we have no handicap spots. We are addressing the valet parking issue and trying to make those people who are using valet parking illegally right now do the right thing, and I've advised, let's use the Bohemian. Make them park, all the valet people, at the Bohemian. They can run three blocks. It's not gonna kill valet parks. That's another, that's, that's where my head is. Private parking lots, like my church that was brought up, we have tried to work with them. They do not want to work because it's a liability. It's a liability for them to have people parking there after hours. Things get broke, people get hurt, then they get sued. And yes, my church has been closed for a year, and I'm still sad about it. But those, that's my thought process when I look at this parking plan. We have got to start investing in the city. If we want everybody else to invest in it, we need to figure out a financial plan. I've ran the number six different ways and sideways, because I am a financial person. That's what I do for a living. We're paying seven point five million. I don't know where you got ten just a minute ago. And four percent, we are not gonna get that anywhere else. And when I say tax-free, we're losing that tax-free bond. We're not gonna have that option in three and five years from now to go out and bond for this. This is something like Brett said earlier. We would have had to put a plan in place and saved money for fifteen, twenty years, and by the time that happens, the cost of construction, construction is just gonna be through the roof. Um, I hear from the people who are most affected, the business owners, businesses bring dollars. Dollars offset the cost to the residents. When tourists can come into our city and offset the expenses that are on the backs of our residents, to me, that's a win. When people stand up here and say, from La Chale, which is way west Lake Worth, actually unincorporated, I think, that he comes to our city and he enjoys it, but it's free for him, our taxpayers are paying for him to come here for free. That doesn't sit well with me. So I am in favor of this parking garage. If the numbers were any different, I would not be in favor. But because of the financial implications to this plan, and I know where our future's gonna be in three to five years, just like when I invested in that business fifteen years ago, and people told me I was crazy, I'd be out of business in two years, we're celebrating fifteen years. It's all about having a good business plan. This is the way our city's gonna move forward. We have to do this for the infrastructure, for the streets programs. We don't have any more ARPAs. We don't have any more penny sales tax. We need a plan.
That's four minutes.
That's my, I'm, I'm, I'm in support of all paper.
Two, uh, Mr. McFoy. Go ahead.
Um, okay.
No, just going one, two.
You know, um, I'm, I'm not, I'm not a businessperson, and I, I am, I can do numbers, and the numbers work. And when I listened to Sarah talk about, um, being a vice mayor, being a business owner, and, you know, I did what Greg did when I was running for office, and I went to all of the businesses downtown, and I said, first they said, you're the first person from the city to come talk to me, and I was thinking, well, that's kind of scary. And so then I walked in, but we talked, and they all said, the biggest problem is parking. And it wasn't necessarily that, um, it was that their, their employees couldn't, couldn't all park there, and if the employees were parking there, then the customers couldn't park there, or that the customers would pass by and say, oh, forget this, and go somewhere else. Um, so the, the discussion of parking needs, I don't think is, I mean, it was, it was Thursday night. I couldn't even park to go to the gym, which was, um, next to the bakery down by the, uh, down by the, um, Cultural Plaza. This is last week. Not, I mean, this is a regular Thursday night. There was absolutely no parking. And what really got me in this little anecdotal stories was if you were at the CRA meeting last week, there was a girl who lives one or two blocks north of, um, Lucerne, Lake and Lucerne. I don't know exactly what street. She was saying, and I didn't think of this, because I live like twenty blocks north, that people are parking in front of her house where she can't park in front of her own house that she pays for to, so that they could go downtown for free. Um, that's not a, that's not a great plan. Um, the other thing is, and, and, you know, I was talking to, um, Tyler, uh, earlier about paid parking. And he did send us emails, and he sent us an email. Do you, it was basically, if you agree to this, um, what Mr. McFoy's saying, if you agree to this, then you are for paid parking. And the thing about it is, is that there's not one paid parking system that you just check off. It's very, there's so many various variables here. There's so many nuances. Would we have paid parking but free for residents? Would we have paid parking just on Lake and Lucerne? Would we have, um, residential permits that you could only, the people that lived on first would be parking there? There are so many variations of a paid parking system that I, an email to him would be, I'd be writing a Bible. You know, and it's not my decision, and so I would never go on record to say that, but we have so many decisions to make about a paid parking program. Is this going to cause one? Yes. Is it coming? Yes. Are we a city? Yes. You know, and has, it doesn't necessarily mean that we are going to make it so when you go downtown to get a piece of pizza, you have to pay five dollars to park and five dollars for your pizza, because that doesn't make financial sense, and that isn't smart for a community to do to its residents. You know, so there's going to be, so, at least this is how I envision it. I envision it that we are going to have surets. We are gonna need to have everybody's ideas on this, and we're gonna, some people are not gonna be happy. Hopefully, nobody is a hundred percent happy, because that means we've compromised, and we've put something together that works for the city and also can work for the community. Nobody likes change, and nobody likes to spend money. So, of course, we're not gonna love it. But it's like, Vice Mayor said, I mean, we, we cannot continue. All these ideas that came up tonight, they're brilliant, but they all cost money, and we don't have that money. So we need to have, start thinking outside the box. We need to start getting a revenue stream. Um, the last one that I wanted to say, oh, God, I knew if I didn't say it, I was gonna forget it.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, that's four minutes.
Perfect, because I couldn't remember it anyway. Thank you.
Mr. Diaz?
Thank you. Um, gosh, with so much to say in four minutes. Well, I mean, I guess, for starters, the comment previously about, um, we're using taxpayer dollars to support people from outside our community to come here, and I sure hope we do that, because that's generally how economy works, and I want you to come here instead of your own downtown and spend your dollars. I mean, that's kind of the whole point of this, right? And, you know, is there a parking problem? For sure. I don't think anybody is really disagreeing that there is a need to address parking. Uh, does it need to be, you know, a parking garage? Do we need to go for the, the, turn it up all the way to eleven from the start? Um, you know, I've mentioned that book, The High Cost of Free Parking by Donald Chupin. If you read into his work, he, like many other planners and people in that field, have pointed out that you exercise all available options before you go for that one, because traditionally, uh, garages aren't necessarily the best financial decision. They take a really long time to, uh, pay themselves back, basically, and and we're really seeing that with the Bohemian especially, right? And the bottom line is, you know, with this, with what is presented in front of us, it, it's really unfortunate. I think W. Moda has a lot of things that they bring to the table, you know? I think something does need to happen to those properties. Definitely residential, that sort of thing, but, but there are so many things that are still unanswered. You, you, you know, there's comments talking about this as some kind of math equation or financial. Well, there's still a lot of variables that have not really been defined yet, and especially in regards to this parking, and you know, I, I look at what's being proposed on. And, you know, I, I look at what's being proposed on the agreement and I, I can't help but wonder that this agreement is written not to the benefit of the city. And we represent the city. And there are so many things through this and we only have a couple of minutes. So like, you know, one example, like the relocation agreement, the structures get moved in and we have to accept them as is. So like, there's no, there's very little duty on the people who are gonna be moving those structures to make sure that they don't come apart before they reach their final destination. I mean, there needs to be better protections for the city and the CRA and these agreements. And in an ideal world, all of these agreements would be brought together and decided on together, not in piecemeal like this, when we're still waiting for information that could come literally next week, that sure would be helpful in making this decision tonight. Um, and, you know, even in, even, in an even better world, I feel like all of these proposals and agreements and the whole thing as one package, you know, should be brought to a referendum for the community. But obviously, that's not gonna be an option. And that's more of a comment on the unsolicited proposal process, which I've been critical of in the past. So that's not surprising. Um, so, you know, it's just really unfortunate that this is how it's presented to us. I feel like, uh, it's broken up in pieces, there's way too many questions, uh, more so than answers. And in terms of paid parking, I mean, you look at what's being proposed and it talks as if it's a fact that there is going to be one hour free parking in this garage. Well, if one hour is free, then what's the rest of it? I mean, there's other options out there in regards to parking management. You're absolutely right, Commissioner May, that there's a lot of things to consider and there's a lot of different variables of what could be in regards to parking management. And when it comes to parking management, not every option results in paid parking. Um, but in the bottom line is that conversation needs to be made, needs to happen. I look forward to seeing that happen, although now I can't be a part of it. But, uh, it's a really important thing that should come before this horse. I mean, it's, this is a little bit of the cart before the horse situation and.
Four minutes.
Thank you, because that's my closing line. And, and with that, you know, I think it's pretty expected what I'm about to say.
Okay, thank you very much. I just have, I mean, there's a lot to say, but I'm, I've only got four minutes. Um, I've spent quite a bit of, I live downtown, this is gonna affect me as much as anybody else, except Deborah Roberts, she's gonna be closer. Um, there's a lot of valet parking downtown right now. I go around at night and there are many restaurants. And I spoke with the restaurant owner and he's like, if I don't have valet parking, my people are affluent and alter and they're not gonna come. So the valet parking has to have someplace to put these cars. And right now, they're going into, they're taking up spots on Lucerne and Lake and they're taking up residential spots. So we have to deal with that. And they can pay for the, the valet, people can pay. It doesn't have to be free valeting. Um, I have always said, when we get to paid parking, which is something we're gonna have to talk about, that there would be resident rates, that we would acknowledge the fact that we don't wanna hurt our residents, that we would have, when you get a Lake Worth Beach parking sticker now would be, you know, a Lake Worth parking sticker. Um, and, and like Ms. May said, we have a lot to talk about. I've spoken with a lot of business, I, I had a business down, I mean, my business is downtown for twenty-five years. And, um, the business owners that I speak with want that parking. They, you've heard, uh, Michelle from, uh, Pause on the Avenue. Um, I also follow Strong Towns. And as a matter of fact, I might be going to one of their, they're having a, a meeting in, uh, San Antonio. And someone sent me a video from Strong Towns about parking and I, I watched the whole thing. And it was about, you know, parking garages should be the last, last effort, blah, blah. And, um, and one of the things that was said, though, if you're gonna have a parking structure, it should be centrally located. Well, this could not be more centrally located than where it's gonna be. And number two, interestingly, I did a little more research and for, they used Fredericksburg, Fredericksburg, Arkansas as the example in this Strong Town video. And I did a little research with, with, uh, I went and looked at Fredericksburg, Arkansas. And interestingly enough, there was a Methodist church that has a parking structure of about two hundred and eight spaces in Fredericksburg. And on March fifth, twenty twenty-five, the city of Fredericksburg took over that parking garage. Because even after they had done all the op, things that they are supposed to do according to Strong Towns, they realized they still needed a parking garage. So, um, there are, uh, there's, there's many, you know, miles to go before we get the final design, things like that. But I have lived downtown for, I bought my house in nineteen eighty-nine and there has been a parking problem downtown pretty much ever since. So I am in favor of it, there are some, and, and we are never gonna make everyone happy. That's just, that's just part of it. There's always gonna be people thinking you're brilliant and other people thinking you're stupid and corrupt. But I can take that, I don't take it personally. So I believe that we have a parking problem downtown that we need to address. W. Moda came up as a opportunity, it just, they appeared, they came as an opportunity. We had, we were gonna do an RFP and I, you know, you can say, well, we want little stores, you want two, well, people, developers, builders, do it for the money. That's, and there's nothing wrong with that as long as we also get something from it. So, um, there's, certainly the federal government's not gonna be building us apartments downtown. So, um, I, I hope I'm right. But I, I do support. So we have now had our four minutes each. I didn't use up my four minutes. Um, let's call a vote. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. And then we have, um, the second piece of this. Who? Oh. Um, the next one is, uh, B or H. And, um, we have, we're waving the, the reading because we literally do not have time. So I would like a motion on the next one on each.
Motion to approve.
That's the P three comprehensive agreement for South Cape parking. Uh, one more thing I wanna say, I didn't use it, I, I've read this and I've spent, I'm an attorney and I've spent a lot of years on a dais, reading other people's stuff. And I've done a lot of contracts. And I have to say that the protections on, it's a very equal protection. We are very well protected there. Thank you, Christine, I know you did a lot of that work. Um, there, as I, well, what about this? What about that? And there it is. So I, I commend you for that. Um, better you than.
Is that your light on over there?
Better you than me.
Diaz has his light on all the way over there, that's him.
Oh, my God. So, um, so we have a, do I have, okay, do we have a motion in a second?
Not yet.
I made the motion.
Okay.
I'll make the second.
Okay, now. Um, we have had lots of discuss, we've had, oh, I mean, we've all had plenty of time to review this. We have been, you know, they have been very open in what they're looking for. The, um, the, as I read it, I have no real problems with it. I think let's give ourselves four minutes each again because now it's ten nineteen and we still have some other stuff to do. So let's give each other, let's give each ourselves four minutes on this one and then we will take a vote. Do you want to go first?
All right, I don't need four minutes. Um, but I do need to, um, talk about, there was a delay in getting this to us. And I know W. Moda was frustrated and I know the CRA was frustrated. But I think, but the reason for it is because the attorney and the city manager went through it and basically rewrote the entire agreement, correct? Rewrote it to make sure that they didn't bring us something that was not a good deal for the city. You know, and that I appreciate. And I did, and I did read through this entire thing and everything, I was like, yeah, but it was in there. And I, and I appreciate that because you could have just said, oh, yeah, it's fine. And, you know, you didn't, you took the time, you rewrote it, you got people mad at you. I mean, people were mad, people were, I was getting calls. What is wrong with the city? They're not done with it, we need it now. Well, yeah, but they're doing a thorough job and they're taking their time and they're making sure that the city is protected, not just today, but for years to come. And that's important. And I appreciate that. And, um, that's it, less than four minutes.
Our city attorney was mad at me.
Everybody was mad at you. Everybody was mad at you because they were like, what's going on? We need it now, we need it now. Sometimes it isn't now, sometimes you need to do due diligence. And, you know, the commissioners, we do our job, we do our due diligence. You're the staff that gets paid to do this and bring it to us. We have to go over it and ask questions and understand it and, and give it to you guys and, you know, in a way that's understandable, but that's your job. And I appreciate you doing it above and beyond, just, yes, check the box, I did my attorney job today. No, I really protected the city today. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Diaz? Four minutes.
Thank you. I probably won't need that much time either, but, you know, it is a substantial agreement. My comments still say, stand from previously. I mean, there's nothing, I think you said it pretty well, Mayor, although I think we come to a different conclusion in that, yes, we do need developers and we do need public-private partnerships to accomplish whatever goals that we seek out to be. And it does seem that the disagreement is on the goals, not necessarily uh, on, you know, having a partner, if you will. But I haven't been shying a past that when we see the, the dreaded P three, right? It's, it's something to go for cautiously and red flag. It's, it's not that there's anything inherently wrong with a public-private partnership. It's just that historically, uh, municipalities are not on the good end of those partnerships. Um, and it just means that as, as a government and as representative of people, we need to raise a number of red flags and we need to ask the right questions. And, and that's what this process is about. But it gets further complicated in that it's submitted through unsolicited proposal, um, as opposed to, you know, going through what we started with our original surets and things like that. So even more questions really need to be asked. And then in the end, this is a partnership where we, the city, you know, we're being told, uh, it's being explained, I think, fairly well that in order, if we want this garage, in order for it to happen, we need to borrow money to do it. And why not do it from the developer themselves at this phenomenal rate of four percent? Well, you know, I, I do take issue with that. One, if we tried to get a loan on our, by ourselves to do this, I don't think, you know, forget getting a better rate than four percent or even a worse rate. I don't think we would even get that kind of financing. Um, and the other issue is, you know, going into a partnership where we are also the debtor to our, also our partner. I, I, it's just, to me, it's not a phenomenal arrangement. Um, there's a lot of questions to be asked still. There, this is why there's a need to have all the information available so that we can make all the best decisions that we're capable of and not make a decision on something today where a week from now, we're gonna have information that's gonna be really helpful. Um, and that's, you know, that's just kind of where I've always been at on this process. And now that, as we get closer, it really, it's really coming to fruition of what some of the fears are. And, you know, there really needs to be a friendlier and a better discourse. Maybe this is a, a self-criticism of ourselves as a city commission, but it's okay to disagree with each other. But when you're making comments saying, we have an agenda to get through and, you know, this meeting needs to end quickly ASAP, this is a huge decision that is entering into a partnership that may or may not be risky to us and we don't have all the information. Questions need to be asked. This process needs to happen and it needs to allow to happen in a way that's transparent and instills trust in the people. I mean, let's be real, paid parking is not a popular idea, uh, to the citizens of this town. You know, this is not gonna be something that's gonna be taken lightly. And I do look forward to the process in the future. But as it stands now, I just think there's not enough there to make this decision.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. McVoy?
Nope, I don't have my light on yet. It's Malaga's ahead of me.
Four, four minutes.
Um, we are definitely rushing this. We heard a lot of sensible comments of, hey, there are other options. The mayor reiterated what she heard from Strong Towns, that a parking garage should be your last. We've somehow, uh, that Strong Towns says, I don't know whether you believe that or not, but, but Strong Towns does indeed say that, so does a lot of other best urban planning practices do that. Uh, a lot of people have said, do some experiments. Do we know, for instance, that the valet agreements currently in place, do we know that they all go to non-residential streets? Do we know that we've exhausted all of the available parking spots on banks, on this store, that store, this church, that church? The mayor raised an issue, or the vice mayor raised an issue that some owners of a lot will have liability concerns. Well, duh, of course they will, anybody would. That's why we raised some concerns about parades yesterday. Cities have liability concerns. Is that something, if our budget to fix this problem is somewhere in the eight to ten million dollar range, well, that gives us a lot of options to think about other solutions that might be a lot cheaper, that might not put us in a compromised position with the project owner, that might be longer-term solutions. Can we look at how we deal with liability? What have other cities done to do with that? Um, you know, you can learn from it. I, one of the things that I'm hearing very clearly is businesses downtown would like to have, let's say they have five clients at a time or maybe ten clients at a time. They would love to have it that all those clients could park right in front of their business. And the clients to the businesses would love that too. But geometry does play a role here. There are not that many spaces downtown in front of businesses. There might be one, there might be two in front of each business. So obviously, you have to deal with parking by either people walking to the business from some distance or somebody moving their car and they get out right in front of it, that's the valet approach. We have not exhausted and we've certainly done those studies to know, could we solve this issue of people wanting to be able to, for free or for a low cost, be able to get in and out of their store quickly? Guaranteed, when we start charging and, you know, Commissioner May says, well, there's a lot of details to work out, it might be partially paid, it might be partially unpaid, who knows? If you're gonna make the parking garage work, it's gonna be paid at a, you know, enough rate to make people push people in the garage. We've already had commissioners here at previous meetings say, hey, we should not let people park on City Hall parking lot. We should not let people pay on Hatch because we gotta push them into the Bohemian because we made bad decision. That's crazy thinking, crazy thinking, is that what that is? We should be looking at, okay, what are our liability? Can we rent out our City Hall space or the Hatch space, those parking lots? We are enthusiastically thinking that the only developer in the world might ever someday be interested in Lake Worth is this one developer and they're gonna give us this great deal on a garage. People, this is South Florida, it's sunny, it's warm, this is a great climate. You will have tons of developers interested here. Do not be afraid that this is your only game and will never have another opportunity. Do the homework, do the studies, maybe you can fix the parking problem without building a parking garage at all.
Thank you, Ms. Malaga.
Thank you. Well, I haven't been sitting up here for twelve or nineteen or fifteen years like other electeds. I just know that I'm here to make a change and make the city better for the people who are coming in this city, for the kids who are gonna grow up here, that they have a city to grow up in. Two things I'd like to see, I would like this Critical Path, Exhibit B, page seventy-one of eighty-seven and page seventy-two and seventy-three to be put up on the city's website and CRA's website. The residents need to see the dates and what we're expecting from the developer in this process. These are things that shouldn't just be in the backup. This is, this W. Moda should have this stuff on the front page of W. Moda Loves LWB, the CRA and the city. We need transparency. I am so tired of hearing that we're shoving this project. This project, I've been to eighteen meetings, minimal, with, with people invited to the community, from the community to hear about this project. But there are some people who aren't on social media, some people who don't pay attention in the city commission meetings. If we exhaust our efforts and say, we're being good stewards and do whatever we can, I want this Critical Path on the city's website tomorrow morning. I don't wanna hear any excuses from the CRA. I want all of the residents to know that we're holding accountable for timelines and for reports for design structure. So when it says the city shall have, or no later than, that the residents are paying attention on October twenty-ninth, we should be hearing something about W. Moda or something about the garage or the design, right? We really need to make sure that we're doing a good job with that. My only other, Mr. Brown, you might wanna listen. Exhibit A, number four. Pedestrian access to South Cape Street from parking structure via two separate stairwells and one single elevator. When that elevator's broke, it's a nightmare. There needs to be two elevators. I don't care if it costs us twenty-five, thirty, whatever thousand more dollars. There needs to be two. Sorry, Christie, I just saw you take a deep breath. Um, because that doesn't make sense to me in South Florida. If we really have people coming here and I'm not, I take the stairs, I don't get in elevators. But if we're trying to be friendly to people coming to our city, one elevator being broke down is not acceptable. But if we're trying to be friendly to people coming to our city, one elevator being broke down is not acceptable for me. So there needs to be two minimal elevators in this building. So that's my only, not demand, but requirement.
That's it, demand.
Okay, demand, but that's, that's what I would like to see.
Okay, great. I totally agree with you, being a person that does get in elevators. Okay, you done? Um, I don't have much else to say. I mean, you know, no other developers, the only other developer that came forward was the Element, which is, you know, why it was terrible. Um, when we started putting in our P, it never occurred to anybody, I don't think, that we would get something like a museum downtown. So the fact that they did come to us with an offer of the museum and people can denigrate it, people can criticize it, but it is part of our art, fire arts legacy down here in Florida, in Lake Worth Beach. We're the only town without paid parking. When I, my um office on on Lake Avenue, I was going home from work one day and there were two people that had just pulled into the parking lot like with their credit card, looking where to pay. People expect to pay. I have, I'll say it again, our residents deserve special consideration in the rates or whatever. Um, we need income. I mean, it's just that simple. We need income. If we, everything's going up for us as well as it's going up for you. If I, if I, I'm not making enough money, I get a second job. What we have to do, this is kind of our side gig, our second job to earn some more money because we can't raise, we're not gonna raise the property without a tax. Well, we won't even have any profit tax, so anyway, next, next week is a whole different thing. And we need to adapt. I mean, we can't, we cannot put this city as, I mean, I live in a historic cottage downtown, shotgun, twenty-five foot lot. I love it. I love the, the, um, cottage part of our house, but this is right downtown and we cannot preserve this city in amber. It just doesn't work. We have to adapt on some level to the fact that life is different than it was a few years ago. So um, it's a little scary. People don't like change. It's gonna affect my, I won't be around them much longer. But the, um, as older folks, um, the people that move into the city now, that will be their experience of Lake Worth Beach. That there is a parking garage, that there is a museum, that there's more to do. And I think that the valley parking is, what really pushed me over the edge was seeing how many valley parking stands are downtown right now, which tells me we need parking. So um, at least two, four, five uh that I can go downtown and see. So, you know, we can say, you know, some other developer might come through, we might not have this, we might not. We have something, you know, bird in the hand. And I think that the fact that we have a museum, which is gonna, you know, prompted this. And at some point, there will be paid parking. Of course, it's not gonna be free on the street and paid and everything. But again, our residents will get um consideration. One other thing I do wanna say, the, as far as the Bohemian, we have to figure out a way to make the entrance. And somebody mentioned it and I've thought about it a lot. We have to figure out a way to make the intersection of Dixie and and Lake attractive. Like, you know, there is planting, something to make it not like this weird scary thing to go across Dixie Highway. We have, I just saw some parking signs and I'm not impressed um with, it just, you know, public parking with the sign. I think we need to zhuzh up how we deal with the Bohemian parking garage, I really do. Um, we need to do that because we need to make that a mark of.
I cannot be the only person contributing to the Bohemian parking garage, I will say that.
Are you, great, yes. So um, so do you pay for the electricity you use down there? I think you do. All right. So I think we need to explore using the Bohemian more um and we'll have meetings about that. We have um, and you've been a circuit, you're a good woman. And I do want circuit, I mean, I love circuit, but people that are gonna use the garages are not gonna use circuit because that's for the residents. People coming from out of town will need to go into the parking garage. So I wanna thank everybody for their concerns, um, for their comments. And um, we all want this city to be a good city. And uh, so, having said that, we have a motion in a second, right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Again? Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Let's see.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, was that three, two? I didn't hear everyone.
Oh, it's three, two.
Thank you.
Okay, where are we?
We're at public hearings, A.
Oh, public hearing. Resolution number three dash two oh two five, abandoning an approximate eight foot wide alley right away located at sixteen hundred South Dixie, Lake Worth Beach. Motion to approve, do I have a second?
Um, mic on, motion to approve.
Then much, but it's much better. Um, second, all in favor?
No, I have a comment.
Oh, we have a comment, I thought. No, these we are.
I know, but look at the timeline, we have to go.
No, um, how many comments?
One, short one.
Real quick.
Sam Smith, one oh nine North Palm Way, once again, the city is giving away public owned land for, based on the backup. No compensation, I'm not against selling this alleyway to the developer, but why, why, why is the city so anxious to give away public land and then turns around and cries boo hoo? We have no fund despite the fact that tax revenue is up more than twenty-five percent over the last three years. Where are all those commissioners who keep bleeding about being concerned about the fiscal health of the city? Appears they are absent whenever a rich developer shows up.
The next time you tell me something's short, I'm not gonna believe you. Okay, we're not gonna have any more comments. So we're down to.
Do we have a clarification of why we're not charging? Cause I, that is.
No, because it's ten thirty-eight and we could have asked that question of staff before tonight. Uh, resolution five, oh, vote.
And the city manager seemed to have a clarification which might help.
Yeah, we mentioned in the staff report, but there uh, between all the city departments, we don't have any utilities, there's nothing there and there's nothing we can do with that property.
Correct.
So.
It's unbuildable.
Uh, we have a motion in a second, all in favor? Aye, thank you very much. Unfinished business, Ro. I'm sorry?
I voted aye.
Okay, thank you. Um, unfinished business, A, well, you know, A, resolution twelve dash twelve dash two oh two five, revision of the municipal cemetery.
Sorry.
Cemetery rules and regulations. Do I have a?
I have a motion to approve, but I don't have comment.
Okay, uh, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, what's your comment?
Um, if you go to three rights reserved by the city, letter H, I had asked um city manager to end or add some language about, if we are removing something from somebody's plot, that we send a notice to the owner of record that we removed it.
Are we on the cemetery one or the budget?
Um, real quick, one minute.
That was my first ad addition, if I'd like to get con- consensus on that.
So you mean as opposed to just going and throwing it away?
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that we send some kind of notice to the person of record. And then number ten, I would like to add an I and an H. I being no overnight parking, which is a continual issue in the cemetery.
Hold on, hold on.
So it's the last page.
Number ten.
Number ten, under H, add an I, no overnight parking. And add a J for low, no loud noise or music to be performed or played unless part of a burial service.
Like taps.
Taps, not people just sitting out there with their speakers open, with their car doors open and playing loud music and being disturbing. So is that pop, is that, I'd like to get consensus for those, that's all.
I disagree with the one about notice. There's an old fake bouquet that's been there for six months. I don't think we have to call them up. I think people should maintain them and they should be notified when they buy the plot that we're gonna, if it gets messy, we're gonna.
I think she was talking about the ones that were offensive.
No, no, it says, it says, no, H, it's the city shall reserve and shall have the right to prohibit, modify or remove any monument or structure. If I paid for a monument for my deceased person and it gets knocked over and instead of repairing it, the staff decides to remove it, I wanna be notified. I mean, we don't own that, technically, we don't own that land anymore.
Good point.
Um, but it also continues and it says, structure, object.
Right.
Improvement or adornment from any plot. So that is more than just the actual.
Right, yeah, so if I have a cement vase for flowers and it gets cracked and the city staff decides to remove it, we need to notify those owners.
No, but it also means if you go in there with some very like offensive flag and put it over a.
But it doesn't say anything offensive.
It does.
And, and you don't really wanna go in.
Discrimatory in nature.
No, we can, we cannot, First Amendment rules.
And I don't think you wanna go there.
Okay, then what, what would be, why would we even have that in there? Then what's discriminatory in nature?
I didn't have that in there. Um, I just was adding that we notify the owner.
Okay, is this something we have to hold on tonight?
I, I think there are a number of, where I had several also and that was a good one that I didn't catch, but I agree with the vice mayor. Why don't we move this one? This doesn't seem like it's an urgent thing.
Is there uh, there's a portion in there regarding the fencing? Is there a way we can at least approve that item? That would allow us to move forward with.
Motion to approve the fence and come back with the rest of it.
We need to undo the first motion, quick. Do you withdraw the first motion?
I withdraw my first motion to approve as is and I amend my motion to approve the addition of the fencing, but to bring this back for further conversation on more rules.
Thank you. I'll second that.
I'll third that.
Mister, Mister Diaz?
I did have a, a quick thought. I mean, you know, the, that, that line reads ornament, like monuments and structure, not necessarily like plastic flowers, I don't think, but uh, it might be a question for the city attorney. When it comes to us taking somebody's private property like that, I mean, isn't there already a separate?
We decided not to deal and we're just gonna, we're just voting now on approval for the payment for the fencing.
Okay, then, yeah.
Okay, I see, yes, okay.
We'll bring this back.
Um, so all in favor of that amended?
Aye.
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 Mister Diaz, I think is an I, so there we go, okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
On this uh, next item, we do have one public comment for this.
And which is next at this point?
Uh, the budget amendment.
New business, A, and I have a public comment as well.
This one is.
We're not gonna get, okay, we have to make a decision. We have fifteen minutes. We have, we have to make a decision.
Okay.
Which is the most important one for us to get done before the um, before it's eleven o'clock.
Go on to.
Well, I guess my, my question would be if there are, um, we obviously went through this on all of your one-on-ones. If there are specific questions on particular line items or I'm not sure how you would like to.
Yeah, I mean, I, we all had that opportunity.
I'm gonna check marks next time in my question.
Yeah, um, so this is um. No, it's.
Yeah, it's like, um.
Yeah, we're resolving.
C, resolution five two oh two five, fiscal year budget amendment, let's see.
It's A, but yeah, C.
Do we wanna just move that one and deal with it later? Cause there's, I don't think there, can we?
Well, it depends, uh, cause on some of these budget amendments is for new positions that we need to hire.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Okay, do you have a second? Do you have a second?
Second.
And we should hear the one comment.
Can I hold it? Real quick, you've got one minute.
And what if we have?
Yeah, I know.
Twenty OT Chilcus, eight twenty-two, North C Street. On this budget amendment, amongst other things, is included forty-six thousand dollars to add more cameras from PBSO. I'm sorry, PBSO is like the lion's share of our budget. So to sit through a meeting where people talk about, oh, why do we have any money when we're giving millions? At, at some points, it's been over half. I don't, I don't know what the numbers are right now, but it's somewhere, it's somewhere maybe over half still. We need to look at, you know, why we keep giving money to this agency that takes more than half of our uh, public money. And why do they need another forty-six grand from us for cameras? I think is the existing budget not sufficient? If we're really looking hard at why we don't have money and why we're gonna do something like make forced paid parking, maybe we should look at why we're giving money away to things like this that, you know, the, yes, the world has changed. And one of the ways it's changed is that people are now a little more critical of the role of a bloated police state that we live in. And I think Lake Worth could lead the way by saying, hey, we're not gonna, we don't have paid parking because we reduced the police budget. That's my comment.
Thank you.
I think it's important that people know that those are license plate reader cameras, correct?
No, they're the ones in the park, right.
That, that's correct, and the city actually owns those, PBSO monitors them.
Right.
So that they are not.
I mean, they were our cameras.
They're our cameras, they're not PBSO cameras and they're gonna monitor them for us and therefore to keep people safe.
What's the four sixty's paid for?
By the cameras.
They don't have, they don't have it in their budget already for?
They're not, they're cameras, they're our cameras.
Okay, yeah. Well, no, well, maybe take it out of the budget until you have more answers, better answers for that question.
The city owns them, they're not owned by PBS.
Right.
They are.
Madam Mayor, do you not want me to read any more comments?
No, I don't. It's ten forty-seven and we have.
These are for Bryant Park, not for license plate readers?
These are cameras. We, we have license plate readers in the city. We also have locations that uh, will be going in parks as well.
Yep. Yeah, security in the parks.
Safety, yep.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor?
I'm not very thrilled about that forty-six, knowing, I, that's not what I was told in the president, so reluctantly, aye.
Yes. Um, Miss, Miss.
Mister Diaz? I, yeah, I, I do have um, questions, but I can, I can talk to Jamie about it later.
Okay, thank you. Mister Diaz?
Aye.
Okay, great, so we, uh, all in favor, aye, unanimous, thank you. Okay, next one is.
Schedule of fees.
Schedule of fees. Resolution seven dash twenty twenty-five, amending the schedule of fees and charges for city services for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Uh, do I have a motion?
Motion with a comment.
Motion with a comment, I'm here.
I have a second with the.
Second with a comment.
Okay, I don't know if we're gonna take, we have much more to do before we can.
I just have one clarification that I need to hear.
So I just, I just, page thirty-three. Hold on. Where it says the dumpster thing?
Yeah.
I should be looking at you, sorry, the dumpster. Can we put any language in there that it must be a dumpster from SWA? Or our contractual dumpster agreement, so people don't get in a pickle where they rent dumpsters from people who knowingly can't be in the city and then they get fines of up to seven, eight, nine, eleven hundred dollars. So on page thirty-three of the fee schedule.
Okay.
If we can add language in there that it must be an approved contractual licensee, whatever the legal jargon has to be.
Just nice, Mister McVoy, you seconded it. Do you agree with that?
Yeah, I do agree.
Okay, so um.
But I have another unrelated question.
Yeah, I'm okay with that one.
Please, we have ten minutes.
Okay, um, my question, I just need clarification. I guess it would come from Jamie. There was various items in there relating to the mobile home parks and the fees, individual and overall and whatnot. I need to be clear, because we had a discussion of this several years ago, that we did not want to make the burden on seniors in several of our mobile home parks uh, any higher than what we do for private residences. And I just need clarifika confirmation that anything that we're doing here does not raise those fees on.
See anything here that?
Correct, we have not touched anything with the mobile home parks. That's nothing that's highlighted.
Cause there, there are line items there and it was unclear to me what was changed, what wasn't changed. As long as you're.
Well, what's highlighted were the changes, the modifications made, but there's nothing highlighted in the mobile home parks. We didn't touch any of those rates.
Okay, I don't think my online one had.
Okay.
Okay, if you're confirming, I'm good to go.
I have a couple of questions, do it, I'll ask them later. Um, do we, uh, we have a motion in a second, all in favor? Well, we don't have time, I'm sorry. I understand that, but we don't have time. It's ten fifty and we've got no miles to go before we sleep. Mister, please, thank you, but thank you.
Also.
All in, all in favor?
I did have one issue. I believe we only have one, once a year crack at these schedules, fees and things. And I think I'm seeing an attorney, uh, uh, agreement.
They filled out a public comment card, we do have to allow them.
Okay, one minute.
Um, my question is, we've had a lot of discussion up here about the, and I forget the technical term, vacant and undeveloped properties. And we need to make sure that we still have an opening to revise those fees.
About that, absolutely.
And, and we're not locked in by the once a year.
That's true.
Yeah, so anything, I, I mean, I know we're gonna, we approve this today, that if we wanted to change something at some point, we can still change that.
Yeah, we, we have the upcoming FY twenty-six budget, which we can modify. Okay. Fees and hit any language.
Mister Chapman, thank you. So one minute.
Tyler Chapman, twelve twenty-four, North Sixteenth. Yeah, uh, I, I do know what McVoy was referencing here, primary property account assessment, which is forty dollars uh, a month to commercial. And my understanding from the previous meeting where raising costs for trash collection at mobile home parks was mentioned, it was mentioned uh, by you, madam, that uh, these were businesses and they need to be charged as a business. And so are you saying that this is not raising prices on those businesses? I take you at your word, but since I have a little extra time, because that sounds like it's been settled, I should say, these are very dense meetings. If you don't wanna be up late, make the meetings less dense, take items off. Don't expect the public to just ignore important things that happen in the backup because you don't want to be up late. You took the job, it's your responsibility to be here. That, that's your job. And if staff gives you these items, that's what.
Thank you, that's time.
We're table them.
Thank you. Okay. Do you have public, no, do you have a public comment, Madam Clerk, for this one? We're not going to do it, we're not going to do.
I did, I just deleted them because you said I was.
So next, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next up, ratification of emergency procurement for April.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, resolution 1125 consolidated utility revenue bond reauthorization, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mister Diaz voting?
Mister Diaz? I'm sorry, because I can't hear him.
Yes, yes to all of those.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm sorry, I didn't hear who made the motion for C, the emergency procurement.
I think I did three of them in a row.
You made the motion, who made the second?
McVoy made the motion, Maligo second.
Okay, and then it was McVoy, May.
Yep, okay. Uh, change, uh, change order one to agreement with B and B Underground Construction, Inc. for. Stormwater improvement project. Motion to approve by Mister McVoy, second by.
Maligo.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Oh, Palm Beach State College contract electric. This is a little, we have to have a little discussion on this one, I think. Can we bring this back? Can we bring this back? Is there a timeframe for this one?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, he should just explain it because they think it makes it really easy.
Okay.
And also Mister Shepherd is on here.
Uh, for the record, at Liberty Electric Utility Director, this, this is a 1990 vintage contract that started with a three year term, has been evergreening every two years. Uh, it guarantees the college a, uh, a rather significant discount to our electric rates to the tune of about a quarter of a million dollars a year. Uh, below what they would normally pay as any other commercial customer would. We have the option, you all have the option to give notice to terminate, uh, that that would basically just start the clock. We have to give them six months notice during the next six months, we can renegotiate, come up with a new rate. Uh, let them state their case and come back before this commission, then you can make a final decision before October 10th on what you would like the rate to be. So if you vote tonight, you're just giving us the authority to put them on notice that we need to renegotiate this rate, which affords them a quarter of a million dollar discount below our. Yes, it is.
Yes.
That's all you're going to do tonight is start the negotiation.
Okay, so.
Motion to approve, sending them a notice that they're no longer getting free money from us and you're going to renegotiate about a contract.
And we'll work on the wording to that effect. With, with counsel.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Our rules, 11 o'clock, we have to shut down.
Yeah, but as long as we started it, we're done.
I think we're done. I think we're done, all right.
This morning on my Google feed was an article that said situated between West Palm Beach and Boca Raton is a coastal Florida city with artsy downtown vibes. I started reading it going, here we go, Delray Beach, it's all going to be about, this is an article about how amazing our city is.
And this was in.
This is not something we paid for, this is a tour, a writer came to our town and talked about how vibrant, how artsy, how artsy, how artsy. Um, the amazing beach that we have, and I just.
In our free downtown parking.
It does not say anything about the parking situation, which did not help me in my case today.
It said, it would be such a better city if I had.
Such a better city if there was downtown paid parking. Um, but I just want everyone to know that this is, this is good for us, right? Like this is something we need to be proud of. Islands Magazine is writing about us.
Go Matt Claiborne. We'll give him a shout out.
Go Matt Claiborne, yes. Um, okay, so it's four minutes to 11. Mister Brown has his light on.
I do really quick things.
Okay, I think we're going to skip commission comments tonight.
So, um, on this Thursday, uh, March 20th, from 10 a.m. to 12 p.m. We have the Sunset Ridge Pickleball Court ribbon cutting.
Yep.
And there will be a pickleball clinic.
Oh, I would go.
Directly following the ribbon cutting.
What are you saying about my pickleball? Which are zero.
Also, uh, there on, uh, March 31st at 5 p.m. Will be the, um, the swearing in ceremony. Um, that's a Monday for, uh, Commissioner McVoy, congratulations and, uh, whoever is the winner of District Four for the runoff. Um, and then at six o'clock on that same night, after the ribbon cutting, we have a workshop that's on all of your calendars. That is the workshop that we'll be discussing P3, P3s, as well as unsolicited proposals, that whole thing. I'll be sending an email out to all of you guys with some preliminary information and some stuff from other municipalities around the country. And we're not going to have to reinvent the wheel, I'll put it that, that way. Um, but, uh, that's all I got.
I do want to say one thing before, I have three minutes to say it. Mister Diaz, I just want to say, it has been a pleasure working with you. Um, I, I thank you for your time and the effort that you put into being a commissioner here. I know you are well respected when I go to Tallahassee and when I speak with different agencies. You are well respected in your field and I wish you, I think that this comes from all of us, we wish you all the best and stay in touch.
And I'm, I'm, I was very honored and thankful to see him being engaged tonight.
Absolutely, absolutely, was a gentleman and a scholar, and we thank you very much and.
We'll keep fighting in the water.